To the planning commission meeting of January 20th, 2021. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Golden.
Here.
Commissioner Coff still.
Here.
Commissioner Tard.
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Present.
Chair Haskell.
Here. Thank you. Okay. Now, the first item on the agenda is oral communications. These are items that are not agendized, but that the public, if they wish to communicate something to the planning commission, is free to do so. So I'll ask now if anyone has oral communication. It should not relate to the items on the agenda today. Anyone? Laura, I'm having a little trouble seeing if if anyone's raising their hand, so I'll ask you to help.
Yeah, we do have a hand up from Caroline Vertonghen.
Okay, okay, Ms. Vertonghen, what is your oral communication, please?
I just want to thank you very much for allowing us to participate. Just wanted to make sure that you got my email with all my comments.
We received an email that Laura distributed this afternoon. Laura, can you confirm that's the latest one?
That's the latest one. It did include her comments, and then there were attachments to her comments as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, anyone else? If not, it looks like the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December 2nd. So I'll ask my fellow commissioners if they have any comments on those minutes.
I had no comments.
Anne?
I had no comments. They were fine.
Okay, Nicholas?
I have no comments.
And Craig?
No comments.
Okay, consistent with past practice, I have one comment.
Just one?
Just one.
And that's not, yeah.
Yeah, well, read page 257, and it's really a question for Laura to go back and check. The first full paragraph says Commissioner Golden pointed out, et cetera. And then it goes, which he considers to be related to aesthetics versus power concerns. I think the likely issue there is safety concerns. If you could go back and check the recording, if it was recorded, because the prior paragraph seems to be focused on safety, health and safety.
Yeah, we were talking about the power possibly relating to fire at that time. So that was just basically the intent of that.
Okay, so, so, yeah, John, that's what I thought. And so the question is whether that should be health and safety or something like that. But other than that, I do not have any other comments, so I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes as amended if Laura goes back and finds an amendment is needed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Hey, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, that motion passes. All right, so the first item on the new agenda is the annual election of the chair and vice chair. And so from my perspective, we're looking for people to nominate. It is past practice that Craig is a vice chair would be promoted to chair. And can I have any other nominations that the commissioners wish to make?
Well, I'd be happy to nominate Craig.
For for chair?
For chair.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion among the commissioners?
Yes. I would like to consider in light of the very few meetings that were held this past year and the obvious talent and intellect and diligence of our present chair that consideration be given should she be interested in serving for a full term.
Well, I'm not sure how to handle that. In terms of my own view, for what it's worth, I think that following in the peaceful transition of power that we all experience today, that I would think that it is the appropriate thing to do to pass the gavel, so to speak, on to Craig. So that's what I would recommend.
If I may, then, respect and acknowledge our present chair's
wishes.
Wishes, thank you. And 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 withdraw my proposal.
But it is appreciated, however. Thank you very much.
And I would like to second what Nicholas is saying, is you have been a fabulous chair.
In my light duty, but but it's been such a strange year. And I appreciate how flexible both the staff and the commissioners have been to bring things together. I know it took longer than I think we all would have wanted to pull together a full capability to have discussions. I know that's been potentially delaying some things that the town needs to address. But nevertheless, I do feel that we've done an appropriate thing to have ad hoc committees to approve, you know, measures that enable local businesses to stay operative and to consider things, given the new technological challenges. I very much look forward to recommencing our normal meeting capabilities when appropriate. So with that said, Laura, how in terms of, or Kara, in terms of process, should we have nominations of both the chair and the vice chair and then proceed accordingly?
I think you've typically done them separately in the past, so the nomination and the vote on the chair and then a nomination and a vote on the vice chair.
Okay, are there other nominations or should we proceed to a vote on the election of the chair then? Commissioners?
Vote.
Vote.
In the observation of decorum, I would like to second the motion, if it hasn't been, for Commissioner Taylor's elevation to chair.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
I'm gonna abstain.
Yes, thank you, Craig. I don't know, are you allowed to vote for yourself? I actually don't know that rule.
I think you are, but I will abstain.
Wonderful. Well, my best wishes to the new chair. In terms of nominations for the vice chair, can I ask the commission to to offer up comments?
Well, I think Anne would be an excellent choice.
Yeah.
For this.
Yes, and I agree for what that's worth.
Thank you.
If she's willing.
Yes, I am.
Okay, any discussion, any other comments? Okay.
I move that we elect Anne as vice chair.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I will vote for myself.
All right, any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So with that, I'm officially passing a gavel over to Craig, I believe, if that's the appropriate thing to do, to conduct the next item, which is the study session.
Great. Well, thank you, Judith, and thank you for a peaceful transition of power. And you really have been fabulous this last year, and I hope that I can hold the same standard.
I have no doubt.
So before we start, Larry, I see that you have your hand up. Is there, do you intend for your hand to be up? Okay, so there's hands down. All right, so we have 62 members of the public, which is wonderful. And I guess before I continue with the agenda, I just wanted to address the audience, which is kind of weird since I can't see any of you. But as a terrific audience of 62 people and as my fellow citizens that are clearly interested in the topics at hand, I just wanted to say a few words before we get started, and I'll probably say these at the beginning of most of the meetings that we have that are Zoom meetings, just so everybody sort of understands the process. So the first thing is, you know, as this year unfolds, we're going to have a number of significant projects that we're going to be working on. So I think it's going to be a pretty exciting year, and public participation really is critical to this process. So the fact that you've all joined tonight really is a wonderful thing. And there's going to be times when it's going to seem long and arduous, but really having everybody participate really is what makes Portola Valley special and makes this process work. So what I wanted to say is how a commission meeting is structured. I think a bunch of people on the Zoom call have been at meetings before, so you probably understand this. But for people that are new, the way we always set up the meeting, they're all structured the same way, is at the beginning, there's what we call oral communications. And that's an opportunity for people to bring up topics that aren't on the agenda. And then the council, I mean, the commission, excuse me, the commission will listen to those, but typically doesn't comment on them. If there's something that needs comment, it will be put on an agenda at a later date. After that, we sort of work our way through the major agenda items, and tonight it's going to be a study session. And the way these typically work is that we have a staff report, we have an applicant, if there's an applicant presentation, we have that. The commission then asks questions for clarification, and then we open it to the public. And that's the opportunity for all the participants to bring up their issues and concerns. So what I want to sort of help clarify is a couple of things. One, during the public comment period, I want to encourage everyone to be civil and factual and thoughtful in their comments. I think that you, you know, you all understand that, and I think you've all been there, and I think we've had good discussion. The other thing I want to remind people is that oral communications are really best for sort of critical points. I'm hoping, as we have these meetings, and particularly tonight, when we have now 64 people, that we keep comments generally down to three minutes. I'm hoping that we don't have to institute a hard time limit, but we have enough people that if you can make your oral comments very succinct, and then if you have more detailed comments, written comments are the best way to get detailed communication to the commission. We read everything that's sent to us, and it becomes part of the record. So the best way, if you have something long and complicated, is to basically do that in writing. So that's just what I wanted to do, is kind of introduce the general structure. And with that, I want to welcome everybody that's joined us tonight, and let's begin our important work together. So the next agenda item, let's see if I can get my is number four, which is the Stanford facility.
So.
Yep, no, I take that number three, sorry. So Planning Commission, thank you, Jonathan. And commissioners, please feel free to jump in if I'm sort of screwing this up. Planning Commission priorities, discussion and preparation of January 27th Town Council meeting. So this is a general meeting with the town council for the chairs of the various committees to try to help the council set the priorities for the town for this coming year. So I'm not sure where we're getting this feedback, but so Laura, do you have anything that you want to add to this agenda item?
Yeah, this is an opportunity for the planning commission to provide any feedback into that process. This is a little bit different than what some of the other committees do, because they're really kind of setting the priorities that are coming from them up to council. For the planning commission, of course, you'll be responding and reviewing the applications that come before you. We also have work coming up that we anticipate related to a revision to the to the design guidelines that's come about to respond to wildfire safety concerns. So most of that work is with the ASCC, but that will come forward to the planning commission. We also have to do an amendment to our ADU ordinance in response to state law, so that's upcoming in our priority list. So this is a chance of the planning commission, which is to add any other priorities that you think are important into that process, so the council can consider them for their priorities, resources, budgeting, those types of things.
Great, thank you. So with that, why don't I just go through commissioners one at a time and ask you if you have anything that you would like presented to the council? So John, why don't I start with you?
Sure. You know, the only thing that just popped into my head that I am assuming will be big this coming year is the whole housing allocation, housing element. Is my right in that we'll actually start to work on that this year?
We will be providing you updates. We'll start to work on it here in 2021. That's correct.
And with the, well, I'll cover that later. Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Judith?
So, oh. Go to somebody else.
Anne?
Oh, no, the topics you've brought up are the ones I had in mind, the ADU and the fire CD changes that cover the topics that were in my head.
Okay, great. Nicholas?
The items that I have are fire, of course, first and foremost. And I can just say, the way that I'm going to be thinking about this is, these are the issues that I'm going to be going through for each of the items that's coming before us. And needless to say, I would encourage the council to consider them as relevant for for more specific issues. But it's fire, fire danger, and fire resilience, engagement with the community, and engagement includes participation, issues of openness, and also responsiveness. We have the general plan within that we have the housing element and maintaining the character of the town, being attentive, of course, to changes in our community, including housing, and also with respect to kids and making sure that we're finding a place for kids in each of our items that come before us and that they're thought about thoughtfully as we move forward, both from a quality of life as well as a public health perspective.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Judith.
Sorry about that. I was trying to look at things on my big screen, and I can't do both. So I agree with all of that. It would be good to have a little bit of visibility on the bigger items that come before us a little bit more in advance. So maybe we could prep a little bit on on the the stuff that's going to take a little more prep time. So I would suggest that if it's possible, they have tentative timelines for some of the larger projects for us, that they be communicated to us. But I do agree with the priorities that others have focused on. I do think it's also important to understand what the like prioritizing the transparency and ability of the public to have input in these tough times. I think that's something that deserves effort continually. Even if we have a vaccine, it is not going to be a simple year. And it's going to be very important for people to have multiple avenues. So continuing to to improve that and maybe looking at continuing that beyond COVID, if it's working well. So let's let's be a little open to changes in communication strategies around important town topics. That's what I would encourage.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so I would agree with all the comments that have been made. And yeah, I definitely like to see us use some more technology to make, you know, particularly public comments and stuff easily accessible. I mean, you shouldn't have to go to email and read through a 200-page agenda to find out what's going on. So I'll work with Laura and see if we can find something that, you know, we could put on the website as a place to have public comments in a sort of easily digestible format so that, you know, we really can make it easy for the public to participate. Because I agree, I mean, you know, one of the great things is we now have 67 people on the list. In some ways, you know, having COVID and having Zoom calls, we're getting more people now than we would, you know, normally get in a physical meeting. So that's wonderful. On the other hand, we don't get to see the people that we're with. So, so, yeah, I agree with you. I think anything we can do to improve on the sort of overall public communication, because I'm a big fan of that. I think that public participation really is critical to the job that we do.
But I, you did prompt me, Craig, to think of one thing that, and I have no idea if this is even possible. But one of the things I have noted is we get a lot of misinformation floating around on places like PV Forum and things like that, where it's just outright wrong. And then people get all worked up about it. So I don't know if there's anything we can do from a fact-checking perspective or, you know, try to debunk some of those things before everybody gets all worked up about them. Anyway, random thought popped into my head about how to public input and then also let people know that, no, that's not right. You know, we can tell them to go check out the 200 pages of notes, but that's a little hard to do also.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm hoping is that we'll be able to create some project pages. And if people have questions about particular projects and the status of the project, where we are, that they can go there and succinctly, you know, a webpage or two, see what's going on and not have to sort of thumb back through all the agendas and, you know, the minutes of the past. Any other comments? All right, so with that, are we ready to move on to the study session?
Only so much as I'm going to recuse myself at this point. I do work for the university. And it would not be appropriate for me to participate. Laura, if there's an appropriate or easy enough way to remove me from the the box here, or maybe I should just sign out, that may be the right thing to do.
My recommendation, Commissioner Coff still also has a conflict. So if she wants to give the reason for her conflict, and then I think if both of you wish to sign out of the meeting, that would be the best practice.
Thank you.
Great. Yes, I will recuse myself. I live on Minoka, which backs up to the Stanford wedge property.
All right, well, we're going to miss you guys, but but thank you for your public service. And I think recusing yourself is obviously the proper thing to do. So thank you, and we'll see you next time.
Look forward to it. Take care. Bye bye.
Good night.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, let's move on to item number four. So Laura, I assume you have a staff report, and we're going to have a presentation from the applicant. What order do you want to do these in?
The staff report will be first, and all as part of my presentation, I'll go over the proposed format for the study session tonight.
Great.
So we've, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Before you start, I just want to add, so this is for the audience. So tonight, we're going to talk about things in a broad view. This is not the night that we're going to get into whether this is in compliance or, you know, exactly what the detailed issues are and how we're going to solve them. What we're going to do tonight is understand broadly what this project's about, and then Laura will talk about it. But the goal then is that we'll set up several meetings after this, and I'll make sure that they get published on what the topic is. And it's at those meetings that I expect to dive into the details. So, you know, we're going to have the IR, we're going to have fire safety, we've got biology, their whole list of issues that we want to make sure that we get into. So one thing I'd ask is when we get to the public comment section, think about what it is, what meetings you want after this broad overview that we can then drill into the details, because that's really when we're going to get to the the heart of the matter. So thank you, Laura. So go ahead from there.
Thank you very much. Carrie, if you could go ahead and share our presentation, our staff presentation. So, good evening, commissioners, members of the public. For those of you that don't know, I'm Laura Russell, Planning and Building Director. I'm joined by Stephanie Davis, who's our consultant planner for this project, Cara Silver, our town attorney, and Lee Prince, legal counsel from Cara's firm. So this is the study session to discuss the housing project proposed by Stanford University. It's at 3530 Alpine Road. The site is commonly called the Stanford Wedge. This site has been in the town's housing element of the general plan for many years, envisioned as a possible location for cluster development or affiliated housing. Stanford initiated this process in September of 2019 with the submittal of a formal application. They've made some revisions since then with a couple of different versions of the plans, which have been available on the town's website. And we've been doing a very technical review of those plans to see if they were complete enough to start this public process. So we do think now that the plans are at a point that we should start to have this conversation with the community. So we're happy to have the study session this evening to get that started. Next slide, please. So a special welcome to any residents that are new to planning commission meetings. The format of this meeting will be similar to how we normally conduct meetings. First will be this staff presentation that we're giving now, followed by questions from the commission for staff. Then the applicant has a presentation, followed by questions from the commission for the applicant. Then public comments using the raise hand feature in Zoom. So all residents are welcome to participate by using that feature. The chair will call on people and staff will allow you. We're facilitating the Zoom platform to allow people to speak. And then there'll be commission discussion and direction. Next slide. So some information about our staff presentation. As mentioned by the chair, we'll provide an overview of the proposed project, the entitlements that are required, and an overview of the process tonight. Since this is the first in a series of meetings, we will not get into a complete technical discussion regarding the compliance with the town's policies. That's going to happen at future meetings. We will provide an overview of CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act, but we're not going to talk about the project-specific details and evaluation tonight. There will be no formal action by the planning commission. This is to introduce the project so that everyone has a baseline understanding as we undertake this process. Next slide. So now I'll hand it over to Stephanie Davis, our consultant planner, to give an overview of the project.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening, everyone. Stephanie Davis. Tonight, I will be going to present a high-level overview of the proposed project scope in its entirety. So I'll begin with the project location. The development site itself is a triangular-shaped parcel that's slightly over 75 acres in area. It's located on Alpine Road in between the residential neighborhoods along Minoka Road and West Ridge Drive. The lot is significantly steeped upslope topography along both its sides and to its rear. So the small triangular corner piece of this parcel that is labeled on this map as development area and shown in hashed print is relatively flat and is where the proposed housing for the project would be situated. This same area is also where the existing horse boarding facility, Alpine Rock Ranch, is currently located. And next slide, please. As mentioned, the entire parcel itself is a little over 75 acres in area. So within the parcel, both in the staff report and for the remainder of my presentation, we will be describing the parcel into two sub-areas simply for descriptive purposes only. So the first sub-area I'm going to describe is what I have noted here on this map as the residential development area. It's the small triangular corner piece that's outlined in the red dashed font. So this area itself is approximately 10.8 acres in area. The remainder of the parcel, so everything behind that red dashed area, is what is being described as the open space and permanent maintenance road area. That is the area of the parcel that's outlined in blue on the screen and is about 64.4 acres in area. And I'll be addressing both of these sub-areas in more detail. Next slide, please. So starting with the 10.8-acre residential development sub-area, showing So starting with the ten point eight acre residential development sub area shown here again in red, this is where all of the housing and other ancillary areas to the housing are proposed. The housing units themselves equate to slightly less than four acres in area and result in a total of thirty nine proposed homes, all of those homes being two stories. Of these thirty nine housing units, twenty seven are in the form of single family residences, both detached and attached buildings, each as their own lot, while the remaining twelve homes are multifamily affordable rental units. These twelve multifamily units are broken up into three buildings, each building containing four units. There's a total of eighty nine parking spaces proposed to be provided for the entire residential development. So both the single family homes and the multifamily rental units in the form of attached one car garages and open parking spaces. Next slide, please. So the ancillary space to the homes that I previously referenced is all the other area within that red dashed boundary line that is not a housing unit. So specifically, that equates to six point eight acres of the total ten point eight acres of that tire entire red residential development area. It contains common, contains common open space, a proposed playground and picnic area, landscaped buffers, bicycle parking, and all of the wildland fuel management areas around the proposed homes, which I'll also be discussing later in the presentation. So within that entire residential development area, there are a total of one hundred and seventy seven trees proposed for removal. Of those one hundred and seventy seven trees, a hundred and twenty three are dedicated significant trees per the town's municipal code definition. The remainder non-significant. Next slide, please. So this graphic is a zoomed in version and depicts the location of all of the residential homes that are proposed with each of the twenty seven single family units noted by a red dot. Those homes that have a red dot and are outlined with the red dashed line indicate the duet or attached single family home design, while all of the remainder homes with a red dot are detached single family homes. The lot sizes for all of these single family homes vary between about twenty nine hundred to fifty two hundred square feet. And all are proposed to be individually owned, but subject to a long term ground lease with Stanford, the property owner of the parcel currently. So the homes themselves, or single family homes, I should specify, are either three or four bedrooms and are between about twenty two hundred to twenty three hundred square feet in area, each with its own one car, attached garage, and fenced rear yard. The heights of all of these single family homes vary between twenty seven to slightly over thirty feet in height. Next slide, please. So these renderings provide a draft illustration of both the attached and duet, excuse me, detached and duet style, single family homes. So all of the buildings have gabled roof lines, second story bays, covered front entry.
Okay, I got made vice chair. Wow, there's like sixty three attendee of visitors. That's a lot.
Anne, you gotta go on mute.
Okay, and and lastly, all of these single family homes do have shielded downlit exterior wall sconces proposed as their lighting play, lighting plan. As we will see when I get to the proposed multifamily buildings, a consistent color and material theme is proposed throughout the entire development. And next slide, please. So the three affordable multifamily housing buildings are indicated on this graphic by a red dot. And each building is between thirty two to thirty five feet in height and slightly less than four thousand square feet in area. There are four housing units within each of these three buildings that would be subject to an affordable housing and development agreement with the town, which will also be discussed in more detail later in this presentation. The multifamily units themselves vary from studios to one and two bedrooms. And next slide, please. So these illustrations are the back of the three affordable multifamily or BMR buildings that would face Alpine Road. So the proposed exterior materials, as with the single family homes as well, consists of a painted cement siding with wood trimmed accents, standing seam metal roofs, and metal clad wood windows. All the buildings are proposed to be finished with muted color tones. And next slide, please. So within the residential development sub area, there are different elements of fire safety that have been integrated into the proposed plans. So the area here shown in yellow indicates the defensible space fuel management areas around all of the proposed homes, all of which are designed to be compliant with the WUI or the Wildland Urban Interface Zone requirements. So this area also includes a small access lane that is proposed to be situated between two of the single family homes in order to provide emergency and maintenance access to all of the open area and landscaping behind the homes. This is referred to within the staff report and the plans as a twenty five foot fuel management area. Lastly, the proposed development also has prepared a detailed vegetation management plan or VMP, which addresses existing fire hazards on the parcel. It includes some fire behavior modeling of existing and proposed conditions and further goes on to define some suggested mitigations or treatments to reduce any identified potential fire hazards. And next slide, please. So moving on to the proposed grading plan. In terms of this preliminary grading plan for the entire residential development sub area, there is a total of slightly over ten thousand cubic yards of earthwork itself, which is subject to the town's site development permit requirements, which also will be discussed in more detail later in this presentation. Of this ten thousand plus cubic yards of earthwork, the amount of earth that would be off hauled from the site is one hundred and seventy three cubic yards, while the rest of it would remain on the parcel as fill. And next slide, please. So this plan shows a high level of all of the new landscaping that is proposed within the residential development sub area. The proposed landscaping plan contains fifty five new trees, three hundred and ten new screening shrubs, other ground cover, and is determined to be Welo compliant. Water efficient landscaping, I should note. Next slide, please. So this plan here shows all of the proposed exterior lighting in the residential development area that consists of either wall mounted downlit sconces on the proposed buildings themselves or downlit sconces mounted on bollards at the site's entry points and or throughout other areas, common areas, I should specify, the residential development area. And next slide, please. So lastly, within the residential development sub area, I'll touch upon two other proposed design components. In terms of fences, the existing three and a half foot split rail fence along the existing horse trail will remain, but will be modified in some areas to accommodate some of the proposed site improvements. New six foot tall fencing is proposed around the homes as well as new retaining walls that would vary between three to four feet in height. All of the associated utilities that are proposed to accommodate the development would be cited underground. And the stormwater collection and management plan for the site would be housed on the property through proposed detention and bio retention facilities. And next slide, please. And so now I'll be moving into conversation regarding the other sub area of the development parcel, which we're referring to as the open space and and maintenance road area. This area is approximately sixty four point four acres in area. This area of the parcel contains the steepest and most vegetated topography of the parcel. So within the sub area, the proposed improvements include a new maintenance access road, which is approximately one point two miles in length. It also contains portions of the proposed preliminary trail situations, while the rest of it is proposed to be dedicated as open space. And next slide, please. And lastly, within this open space and maintenance road sub area, a fire safety components are also proposed similar to the residential development sub area. That VMP or vegetation management plan that I mentioned previously also speaks specifically to this larger area with recommendations on treatments for the various existing vegetation types and speaks to the proposed maintenance road as a means of access to perform recommended fire maintenance and safety activities. So with that, I'll be handing the presentation back to Laura, who will be discussing the requested project approvals or entitlements associated with the project scope, the review processes that will be required, as well as the next steps. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephanie. Next one, please. So now we'll be going through the different types of approvals that would be required from the town. The term of art is entitlements. We use these two different terms interchangeably. So I'll go through each of these things, and they're also outlined in the written staff report. So next slide. So first is the certification of the EIR, and this project is subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, which is called CEQA. And an environmental impact report or an EIR is being prepared for the project. This is the highest level environmental review under CEQA. The purpose is to assess any environmental impacts that the project may have. And we do that by evaluating different topic areas, and that includes biological resources, cultural resources, geologic and hydrological considerations, wildfire risk, visual or aesthetic impacts, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, construction noise and traffic. The preparations of an EIR are guided by three different things. The first is the actual state law itself. The second are the CEQA guidelines, and those are published by the state. And the third is the case law. A lot of the way that we practice CEQA is established by cases in the past where CEQA has been implemented and challenged. So there is a long history of CEQA practice, and it has evolved over time. So each agency has to comply with the latest practices when implementing CEQA. Next slide, please. So the EIR will identify environmental impacts of the proposed projects and any potential mitigation measures to avoid or reduce those impacts. The EIR is being prepared by an environmental consulting firm, and that's Lamfair Gregory. That contract is being managed by the town and being reimbursed by Stanford as the applicant. The town held a public scoping meeting in January twenty twenty with the planning commission where we received comments on the scope of the EIR. We also received a number of written comments which were transmitted to the consultant and have been considered in the process. The draft EIR is anticipated for public release in this early spring of twenty twenty one. Then there'll be a forty five day review and comment period. Then the final EIR will be prepared, including a response to those comments. Then the final EIR will be released publicly and will be before the town council for their consideration. Next slide, please. So in general, according to our code, a CUP, a conditional use permit, is required for the establishment of a planned unit development, a PUD. There's a lot of acronyms, I know, when we're dealing with these kinds of planning applications. So these two things together, the PUD and the CUP are used in establishing process for projects to be approved. And all larger developments in town are required to get a PUD. The idea is to meet the town's overall density in a configuration that's specific to the site. So a PUD creates a development plan that's specific just for that property. It's common to use a PUD to cluster development together to preserve the remainder of the site as open space. The code sets out the intent of PUDs, including things like having a variety in the development that responds to the site, achieving substantial compliance with the zoning regulations, affording a potential for a higher quality of development, and the preservation of natural features. Next slide, please. Specific to this project, the applicant is requesting a PUD with site specific regulations for these items that are shown on the screen, and that includes clustered housing, reduced lot size, reduced setbacks, and increased building heights for some of the buildings. To approve the project, the town would have to make the findings in the code for both PUDs and for CUPs. And if approved, it would include conditions of approval on the project to mitigate any potential impacts. Next slide, please. A vesting tentative map is the legal way that subdivisions are approved. And in this case, it's required to subdivide the overall seventy five acre parcel into the thirty residential lots, the two common open space areas, and then to establish the remainder of the open space. A vesting tentative map facilitates the division of land. It shows the parcel configuration, and it shows the design and improvements, meaning things like utilities and other things that are associated with the subdivision. All those things to come together in the vesting tentative map. And again, if approved, the vesting tentative map would include conditions of approval. Next slide. As many of you know, site development permits are typically required for grading, tree removal, and significant site changes. A site development permit has specific purposes that are within the municipal code, things like promoting public safety in the general public welfare, promoting and enhancing a superior community environment, maintaining the rural character, ensuring preservation of the scenic character of the town, protection of trees as well. And so this type of application always requires a soils and geology report as well as an arborist report. Next slide, please. In this case, the site development permit is required for grading as well as for tree removal. Stephanie hit on some of the highlights of the grading quantities in the tree removal proposed. It's subject to the criteria that's within the site development permit ordinance, chapter fifteen of the municipal code. And if approved, a site development permit would contain conditions of approval to do things like prevent nuisances or hazards, and also would typically include guarantees. And this would be things like legal agreements, bonds, and other legal mechanisms that we would use to ensure the work is done according to the approved plans. Next slide, please. An architectural review permit is required for all of the physical physical improvements that are proposed at the site. And architectural review permits are reviewed for consistency with the town's design guidelines. Again, the code outlines the purpose of this type of review. It includes things like preservation of the visual character of the town, stability of land values, protecting public safety and the general welfare, preventing unsightly structures, preventing structures that are not properly related to their site. preventing unsightly structures, preventing structures that are not properly related to their site, adjacent uses, and circulation in the vicinity, as well as indiscriminate clearing of property, excessive grading, and destruction of trees and shrubbery. Next slide, please. For this project, the architectural review permit would be required for all of the new buildings, landscaping and water efficiency, lighting, parking, fencing and retaining walls, the green building components, and any other improvements to the site. Architectural review permits are subject to the findings of both the architectural and site plan review, which are included in the code. Next slide, please. Turning now to density bonus and affordable housing. In general terms, density bonus law is intended to increase the construction of affordable housing statewide. Here, affordable housing has a specific legal meaning based on state law and is also related to local incomes. Density bonus law allows several things. It allows an applicant to exceed the residential density that would otherwise be allowed by a community in exchange for constructing affordable housing units. It provides an applicant what are called incentives or concessions, which can be understood to mean, which means a reduction in a site development standard or a modification of a zoning code requirement that results in identifiable and actual cost reductions that provide for affordable housing. It also allows developers to ask for waivers, and those are a reduction in development standards, such as height or setback, that if you didn't have those waivers, you would physically preclude the construction of the proposed project. It also has its own parking requirements that include parking ratios based on the bedroom count. So state density bonus law requires the town to approve the requested incentives, concessions, and waivers unless the town makes specific findings, and those findings are outlined within the law. There's a memo that's included with the staff report from our legal counsel to provide additional information on this, as it is a complicated topic. So the summary is in the written staff report, and you can also refer to that attachment for additional detail. An important note is that the burden of proof is on the town in these situations in order to make those findings and to be able to present them. Next slide, please. The town's municipal code requires an affordable housing component with all subdivisions, and that's called inclusionary housing. The code further allows up to four units per lot for affordable housing within those subdivisions. So if we combine the different code sections within the municipal code, we find that there are 30 units that are allowed on the property overall, 18 single-family homes on their own lot, and 12 multifamily affordable units on three lots. Of the 30 allowed units, six would be designated as affordable at the low-income level. This commitment to construct the affordable units corresponds to a 35% density bonus in the law. So a total of 41 units are allowed through density bonus. In this project, they are proposing 39 units. I may have said that wrong. Let me repeat it just in case. A total of 41 units are allowed through the density bonus, and the project proposes 39 units. The other six units on the site would also be affordable. The income level of those units has not been determined yet. Next slide, please. They are requesting two incentives or concessions under density bonus law. The first is a reduction in lot size. So the code allows 20,000 square-foot lots with a planned unit development, a PUD, and they are requesting that lot size be dropped down to approximately 3,000 to 8,000 square feet, depending on the different lot sizes in the subdivision. And number two, they're also requesting that the project be clustered in a way that's different than the clustering provision that is outlined in the general plan, and that language is included in the staff report for additional information there. In regards to parking, they would like to use the state density bonus parking ratio that's outlined in the state law, and it's zero to one bedrooms is one onsite unit. There's a typo on the slide. It's two to three bedrooms is two onsite spaces, and four or more bedrooms is two and a half parking spaces. Next slide, please. So when there's an affordable housing component to a project, the applicant and the town enter into an agreement to specify the details for those affordable units. And this is the mechanism to guarantee affordability of those units. And right now, under the law, it has to be affordable for 55 years. And the agreement contains the different provisions that ensure that those units remain affordable and are rented to households that qualify under the state law and the local income limits. So that includes monitoring of ongoing affordability, a process for qualifying prospective tenants, and the proper formula for calculating the rent. There would also be a preference program which would be established to give priority to people that live or work in town. This has not been created yet, but there are multiple examples in other communities. And we just have to be mindful of fair housing laws, but they are quite successful in other places. Next slide, please. Additionally, we anticipate that a development agreement is expected with this project. Development agreements are typically used for larger projects, and they set in kind of like a contract between the developer and the town to set details related to things like construction phasing, whatever agreements were reached through the process, zoning modifications, other details that are things like that. The contents have not been determined yet, as it's early in this approval process, and consideration has yet to be given to many of these details. But we would anticipate that a focus of a development agreement would be on the affordable housing units. Next slide, please. So that concludes the discussion of the required entitlements for the project. And so turning to some of the comments that have already been received based on the early reviews of the project. So as you may know, subdivision projects of this scale require review by a number of different agencies, town consultants, and committees. Those include those that are on the slide right here. Woodside Fire Protection District, Public Works, whose review is done by our consultant NV5 in conjunction with Howard Young from our team. The Town Geologist, which is Cotton Shires, the Conservation Committee, the Trails and Paths Committee. And there's a subdivision committee, and subdivision committees are a special committee that are required by the subdivision regulations, and that includes representatives from the reviewing agencies and committees. So the comments from these groups are included in the staff report. There's a summary in the text of the staff report, and the complete comments are included in attachment number two. Next slide, please. In regards to public comments, staff sent notice to all of the neighbors on January 7, which are within a 1,000-foot radius of the site, letting them know about this meeting tonight, as well as the ASCC meeting on Monday at 4:00 p.m. We also publicized in the town news on the website and on social media. And we received a number of different comment letters, which are included in attachment three to the staff report. And then we got additional comment letters since the packet was published or through clarification with some of the commenters, and those were provided to the planning commission via email. The applicant has also conducted their own outreach as part of their process. Next slide, please. So this is an overview of the town committee and commission meetings required for this project. This is a minimum, and it may take more than one meeting for some of these steps. Staff will be updating the town website with more details as these meetings are scheduled. Residents are welcome to participate in any or all of the public meetings. Staff will provide more information about what will be covered at the different meetings to help residents engage with the process at the point that they're most interested or on the topics that they're most interested. So in terms of what's coming up, as we mentioned, we anticipate the draft EIR to be released in the spring for public circulation and review. This will provide a lot more detailed information for everyone to consider as they're taking up their own reviews. Planning Commission, we're in this meeting right now, ASCC study session on Monday. The ASCC subdivision committee and the planning commission will all conduct site visits. We have a tentative plan for those site visits, but we're working out the details to ensure everyone's safety in this pandemic environment. The subdivision committee will meet Trails and Paths Committee, Bicycle, Pedestrian, and Traffic Safety Committee, Conservation Committee, ASCC, Planning Commission public hearings, and then final consideration of the project will be done by the town council. Next slide, please. So we know that this is a lot of information and why we wanted to start with the overview of this project, because there really is a lot for everyone to understand. So in closing, we staff recommend that the commission consider these steps for the remainder of the evening. Ask questions of staff and the applicant. And we may not be able to answer all of your questions here tonight, but after the study session and the ASCC study session on Monday, we will be compiling an FAQ document to be able to respond to questions from the public and from the planning commission that we're not able to respond to this evening. We also request if the planning commission has any early feedback that they'd like to give to the applicant on the project. And then we staff would be very interested in the planning commission's feedback on topics such as what are some specific areas where more information is going to be helpful? What would assist you in your analysis and review of this project? We're interested in feedback on the compilation of the public comments. The chair talked a little bit about this earlier. That's very timely. Should we include a complete record on the website? So we're interested in your feedback there to make it as easy as possible to participate in that way. So that concludes staff's presentation. We certainly appreciate your attention. We understand it's a lot to digest, and we're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
So do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
Yes.
Shocking.
Lots.
John.
Okay, I'll start off here, and if you tell me, you know, there's always this distinction between a question and then we stray into discussion. So Craig, I'm depending on you to hold me back if I jumped the gun there on that.
Okay, and one thing, John, I just want to say is because this is a broad overview, you know, what I'm really looking for is figuring out what topics we want to make sure that we address, you know, the kind of issues that we need to, you know, deal with, without getting too much into the deep details of the project itself. Because I mean, I think we're going to have plenty of time. I mean, just to be clear, when we looked at Laura's list of meetings, there are going to be multiple planning commission meetings, I guarantee. So with that, please go ahead.
So one of the key things in the report was about the state density bonus law that seems to be a kind of a key thing. It's kind of portrayed as we have to do it, state law. But in my mind, obviously, that is true if we do a CUP and a PUD. And it probably doesn't apply if we weren't to do that. So I guess I was going down the path of would us not liking the implications of the density law be a reason to actually for us to deny a CUP and a PUD?
And if I can ask Lee maybe to start on that, and then Cara, if you have anything else to add.
Yes, so the state density bonus law is independent of the decision on the CUP or the PUD. If the state law provides that if the developer agrees to construct a certain number of affordable housing units, they're required, they're entitled to additional density as well as concessions, incentives, and waivers. There are very specific reasons in the state law that you could deny the requested incentives or concessions that would go, you know, to the project itself. But you would be making decisions on the PUD and the CUP for different reasons, right? You would be looking at different, making different findings. So I would, I would think of them separately, if that helps.
Yep. And then the other thing, from a question perspective, is have we absolutely ensured that this project would qualify for that state density bonus law items? And specifically, I know there were some comments about the need for the market rate units to be similar to the other units. And, and have we just confirmed? And if we don't know the answer, that's okay. Just I'd like to make sure that we get to there at some point.
So state law doesn't dictate the size of the units. It's really focused on the formula of the percentage of affordable housing of the base level project that's provided, and then it provides, you know, another formula to determine the density bonus and incentives that a project would be entitled to. And so staff has gone through that process to determine those calculations. So that's been done, but the size of the units themselves are separate and apart from state density bonus law requirements.
Doesn't, they're similar enough, in other words, to, to, per current law. In terms of our overall housing goals coming up in the next rounds, do we think that the timing of this stand-for project would count towards our next set of goals that come our way?
We don't know for certain at this time, because it would be difficult to project a solid timeline if the project were approved. But we do think it is likely that the units would count in the next housing element cycle. But I say that cautiously, because these are things that have not been confirmed yet.
Right, and we don't have the housing goals finalized yet either. I understand, but I'm just trying to see that.
So can I just suggest that we make sure that this is one of the things that gets on the list for staff to bring back a solid answer before this process concludes?
And did I understand from the staff report that we were, that we were, the comparison here would be 20, something like 21 individual homes would be the alternative? If it were to be developed as individual homes, per the current zoning, it would be like 21 homes?
Yes, the base zoning, according to the calculations, allows 21 lots. And then the code assumes that there is one single-family home per lot. So yes, I think that is a correct assumption.
And it could be one single-family home per lot plus an ADU.
Yes.
Okay.
But that does assume that those lots are all buildable. Is that correct?
If you were doing a subdivision, the lots have to be buildable according to all of our code requirements in order to be subdivided into that configuration. Or there would have to be specific lots that were designated for other use, such as utilities or set aside as open space.
But when you say 21 lots, somebody's made the determination that there's 21 buildable lots? And this is on the entire 75 acres or just the smaller portion?
On the entire 75 acres.
Okay.
From a location perspective, is it possible for me to see of this proposed residential development, how it compares to the current sort of barns and horse facilities that are already there? Is it roughly the same? Is it bigger? Is it, you know, that type of thing?
I don't, the staff does not have that information immediately available. I know that the applicant team has created a graphic for that. So if we don't get to that tonight, that's certainly something we could share in the future.
And from, also from the staff report, I noted that on the Woodside Fire Department, it looked like their last communication on January 15 seemed to talk about two items. But I wasn't sure if they were sort of like, everything else has been determined and is okay, or are these two that are the remaining two, are they ones that are absolutely required? What was the purpose of that particular January 15 memo, I guess, is where I'm interested in?
We're going to be asking for additional clarification from the fire marshal, but I can tell you my understanding, when I last spoke to him about it, is those two recommendations that came out on January 15, right before the staff report was published, I understand to be recommendations that come from the fire district. And then there's a separate document which includes the comments that have been running through different versions of the project. And those comments, to my reading, indicate that those comments are largely satisfied. But we don't want to just, you know, rely on my interpretation of that. And so we do have a request in to get some clarification from the fire marshal, and we expect to be able to provide that to the planning commission.
Let's see, on the, when we talk about the count of the proposed Stanford units, would those units in the Would those units in the future be eligible for ADUs?
Um, they are not proposing ADUs and so. Right now, we're evaluating it as if ADUs would not, um, take place at that site. And, um, I think what we need to clarify and perhaps Cara can weigh on, in on this as well is. If they voluntarily elect to not have ADUs on the property and restrict it as such. You know, what would that mean in the future in regards to state law? So this is a question that we'll need to, um, look into further. Um, so I don't know if Cara has anything immediate, but we do have this on our list of things to provide additional information on.
Let's see, that's what, there were, there was some discussion in minutes.
Cara, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, thank you. So the new ADU law, um, does cast some doubt. On whether, um, covenants that prohibit ADUs are enforceable. So, um. Um, you know, in general, if this were a private developer and they were to play, say, a CCNR that says no further ADUs. That type of traditional, um, covenant is no longer enforceable under state law. However, because this is an institutional, um, organization, because, um. Uh, Stanford has a way of conveying property, um, that is different than, than, you know, other private. Landowners, uh, I think that it, it, there may be a, a different type of, um, interpretation here. And certainly from a practical matter, um, if they state that they don't intend to, uh, build ADUs. Um, I think that we can, uh, for the most part rely on that.
Um, let's see, next question related to geology. There were some discussions of the hermit fault in all the notes, um, and I wasn't, I couldn't tell where that landed. Uh, in all the documentation that we received. Um, is that an open issue? Is it determined? Uh, where is, where does that one stand or is it something we're gonna cover later?
We are going to cover it later. We've been doing research with the town geologists in regarding, um, regarding the history, um, of that fault and what's known about it. So we'll do additional research with the town geol. Geologists, EIR, and then I think there'll be a lot more information for that commission to consider.
From a sort of a taxes and ownership perspective. Um, you know, again, one of the things that was rolling around was Stanford doesn't pay taxes. Um, I'm guessing that's not the case in this situation. Uh, but, um, that would be one of the things that I'd be curious to know if we know the answer to. And, and also similar related to sort of like taxes and ownership. Do we know what the ownership of the BMR units is going to be? I know the other ones are meant to be privately owned. Do we know yet, um, what, what's happening with the BMR units?
So, um, first on the issue of taxes, the applicant can add more to this later if necessary. But staff's understanding is that the owners of the homes would purchase the building. And have long-term ground leases from Stanford for the underlying property. And they would pay property taxes the way a typical property owner would for those houses. Um, for the, your second question related to the BMR units, um, those at this time are intended to be rental units. Um, we would establish the preference program that gave preference to residents that live or work in Portola Valley. And those would be, um, a policy, you know, decisions that we would be making about how to establish that preference program. And Stanford has, um, indicated that they would operate those BMR units and ensure that those rules are enforced. So that they could be available rental units for the town, basically, for town.
So Stanford would be the landlord in that case. Right?
That's the current understanding, yes.
Whatever, yeah, and I know we're still, that's indicated as some of the future work. With respect to the open space part of the property. Um, how far along are we on that in terms of, yeah, what is it really? I mean, is it, uh, open space like a mid pen open space? Is it like a post-owned property? Uh, is it, you know, we're giving trail easements just for the trail or will the whole area be open? Have we sorted through that yet and, and understand where we are?
The current proposal is for it to be private open space, so it would not be generally available to the public. Um, only the trails component would be available to the public. Um, Stanford would continue to own and maintain the open space consistent with the vegetation management plan. And consistent with any other legal agreements that the town would enter into. Um, since, as we discussed earlier, they are proposing to kind of use all of the units that can be built on the whole property. And cluster them together. It would be required for them to preserve it as open space for the life of the project. And so it could not be developed in the future in addition to this development. So that's, we know there will be legal mechanisms in place. We have not established which those would be at this time.
So probably something like a conservation easement, that type of thing.
So before we go, so before we make that conclusion, I mean. Is there gonna be an easement on the open space or are you just saying because they've used up their development rights? There's no practical way to do anything with the space? Cause those are sort, those are sort of different.
Because they've used up, they're, they're using their development rights, to use their terminology, they cannot develop. The remainder of the parcel and what mechanism we would use to ensure they don't develop it. There are different legal instruments that we could use. We just haven't established which one yet.
Thank you.
Those are the questions at the moment. I'm sure I'll come up with some later when we give Stanford a chance to talk, but I'll turn it over to everybody else.
Judith, do you have some comments?
Well, I'm assuming we want more questions right now. I will have some, some general comments. And tell me if this is what you're thinking. I have more specific questions for now. And then later kind of directional guidance on topics that, you know, I, I think need to be really addressed. I was gonna do those separately, is that right, Craig?
That'd be perfect. Yeah, if we can do, keep it mostly to questions now. And then after we've heard staff and after we've heard public comments, then I think we can sort of direct staff on what we as the commission need. That would be perfect, thank you.
Okay, so I'll go down these, they're, they're kind of random, but here, here we go. Um, one question for staff is whether we know anything right now about feasibility. Of the trails and the, um, so subcommittee, uh, recommendation to move the project south. Um, I'm assuming that's something that isn't, hasn't been followed up on, but is that correct? It's a future item to look into?
I think that is an appropriate, um, future item to look into, given the comments from the committees, um, that have come to the commission. So it does seem appropriate for additional discussion and the applicant team may wish to weigh in on that as well.
Okay. From the Trails and Paths Committee comments. I'm not sure if there's a legal, legal distinction here that would need to be understood. They are asking for certain trails and adding one, and that's in discussion. But I think I read the Stanford response was that's okay as a condition of approval. I don't know if that's a different legal treatment than like granting an easement for that. Um, can you help me understand what the, the, the choices or the analysis needs to be? In order to figure out, you know, a- assuming there's some agreement on the appropriate paths, locking it in legally?
I think I understand your question. Um, let me try. So in the course of the planning review process that we're, we're just starting here, including all the different entitlements we talked about tonight. Um, especially the map, the vesting tentative map. We would typically identify the general location, um, for the trails and that would be within reasonable parameters. Um, you know, that the experts would determine of where that trail would be. And the determination of where that, that trail would be and the extent of it would be an important part of the entitlements. Um, that, you know, planning commission and town council would consider. And then there would be the right instruments would be in place with the conditions of approval. So then, um, you know, our own public works and perhaps the trails committee, along with the applicants, engineers, go into the field. You know, and look at the exact topography, the exact tree locations and actually locate the trail. And so conditions would typically be crafted to ensure that there, that, that that happens and meets the standards of the overall approval.
Thank you. In terms of the rental preference program for the BMRs, um. Do we have any examples of local communities that have entered into these? I would imagine that that's something we really need to understand and in particular. Can they be restricted for longer than fifty, why fifty-five years? Is that magic or how did that arrive?
Um, yes, there are examples of other communities that have, um, preference programs. Um, we have to be always cautious when we draft them because of fair housing laws, but there are good examples that we can follow. Um, in terms of the fifty-five years, is it magic? Not necessarily. Um, there's been different time limits that have been in state law over the years for different affordable housing projects. And fifty-five years is the common, um, number that comes up now that everyone uses because state laws actually made it longer. Um, over the years, so this is the longest that it's, it's ever been to my knowledge.
Thank you. In terms of the consultant to the town NV five, can you explain their role? Uh, their, their comments seemed pretty wide-ranging on a number of issues and I couldn't quite tell the scope of. Their engagement and, um, what they've been looking at.
Sure, NV five is, um, an engineering consulting firm that is in contract with our public works department. And Howard Young oversees that, um, consultant contract and works very closely with them. And he personally also reviewed all of the comments for this project. Their role is to review the project for, um, technical consistency with, um, with state laws. With standard engineering practices with the town's municipal code and say whether those technical things are in compliance or not. I think what may be challenging about the way that some of their comments are worded is sometimes they call something acceptable. Um, when really, I, I think what they mean is what's drawn on the plans is acceptable to go into this review process. That there's not a technical engineering red flag that would prohibit that solution from working out in the end. And so it does not, we do not mean to imply that anything is signed off or approved because they have found the plans to be acceptable.
That's really helpful, um, because their comments, you know, went to trails and paths issues, re-vegetation upgrades. Um, historical resources and it, it was getting a little blurry for me. So I might need some guidance going through the rest of this to understand, but that's super helpful. Um. Are there other PUDs in town besides the ranch? I saw that one referenced.
Um, the ranch is actually a, what's usually called a planned development or a planned community where it has all of its own zoning. This is a step down, that's a PUD and we have, um, numerous PUDs, um, in town. Priory, Blue Oaks, there's, there's lots of them.
Okay, thank you. That, that, that's a helpful distinction as I get up to speed here. Um. There, there is, um, on red page eleven, it references the PUD applications have to consider a number of things. Can they actually integrate like fire hazards? I was a little surprised that it seemed limited, but maybe in the context it was put in explaining what a C, a PUD was. Um, you know, geologic hazards, we emphasized earthquakes, but I didn't see fire. Um, can you comment at all on that?
It may have been partially the context and how we took an excerpt, excerpt of the code. Um, it also though is because our code doesn't always have strong language around fire safety that we may want to have today if we were drafting it. Um, but the fire safety elements are well picked up in the EIR and so that information will be available to the commission as well.
Oh, perfect, thanks. All right, um. So when it gets into when you can deny, uh, what is it, the waivers? What, and I guess the concessions, maybe it's just the waivers. Um. You have to have a specific adverse impact on public health, safety, physical environment. Um, and the town has a burden of proof by substantial evidence. Do we have and, or can we get information on examples where? Those criteria have been met and how they're analyzed? Because I think as we think things through, that's gotta be a piece of the analysis. I, I'm not really expecting a here and now answer, but, but if you happen to know, let me know.
I think that that's something we can consider further. Lee, do you have any immediate thoughts?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I can't think of a good example, but it, but it is a good question and I'll, I'll take a look.
Okay. Um, on the subdivision committee, you said it was required by, I think, the town code, uh, on subdivisions. There's no representative of the traffic safety and the planning commission. I assume that latter is because it comes to us after this. But can you confirm why those are not in there? Is it simply the code doesn't require it?
The code does not require it. The code does require, um, an ultimate review by the traffic safety, um, committee. But it is not a listed, um, participant in the subdivision committee for whatever reason. I'm not, I'm not sure why it was drafted that way.
Okay. Um, quick question, zero lot line, can you just explain what that is since it's a piece of what's being suggested to achieve certain goals by some committees?
Um, a zero lot line is when the house is built immediately on the property line and there's no setback. Though sometimes you just ship the house over, um, all the houses will shift over, for example.
Okay. Um. Eventually in this process, you're gonna put out some way like story polls or something else. To let people see where, where the situation site, citing would be. Can you discuss the, uh, process for that or the timing, just so we can have that in mind as we think this through?
Yes, um, we are still working through the approach and the timing. Um, and that's because we've been trying to monitor the, um, situation with COVID. And we wanted to provide real focus and attention on these study sessions. But what we intend is to receive feedback from the planning commission and from the ASCC. On the scope of the story polls and the staking that would be provided onsite. And then the applicant would install the story polls and the staking according to that feedback. And then we would schedule the onsite, um, site visits or site meetings, whatever, whatever form that might take. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. Um, I'm nearing the end here. Um, I did notice some commentary, whether, asking whether or not the utilities will be undergrounded. Has that been discussed yet or is that still open?
It has been discussed and they are proposed to be undergrounded.
Okay. And then, I think for now, my last question is gonna be, um, there are places in the, um. The background information that's gone on for a year, over a year now. So some of it's old and some of it may still apply. Uh, there were two points, um, the Trails and Paths Committee was saying that there hasn't been engagement. Um, to address some of their comments. Do we know if that's been remedied or has started or whether it's to be done?
Some of all of that, um, I did attend the Trails and Paths Committee myself to provide information on the process. Um, I think the applicant is ready and available to attend their meeting or to participate with them in a meaningful way. Um, I think we also are looking to see if there's any feedback that comes out of these study sessions.
Okay. And, um, the other, uh, comment in the notes in my last point here is, um. That there was a neighbor that was, uh, discussing an easement and also observing that there had been no engagement by Stanford on that easement. Do you know if that has been remedied yet or will it need to occur?
Um, I just asked the applicant to look into that further, so I think they should speak to, to that.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Great, thank you. So one thing about serving with smart commissioners is you've asked almost all the questions I had in mind, so thank you. Um, Laura, the one question I had is we're gonna do a couple of study sessions and then at that point, can we put together an ordered list of the meetings? Cause you know, one thing I'd like to see is to make sure that these meetings sort of dovetail with each other in a way that makes sense. And that the public can understand how these meetings interrelate to each other because there's gonna be a lot of them. I mean, there's gonna be a lot of planning commission meetings, but there's a lot of other subcommittees that are. I mean, there's going to be a lot of planning commission meetings, but there's a lot of other subcommittees that are going to meet as well. And I think it's important that there be some overview of how these meetings interact with each other.
Yes, we can definitely do that, and I would, you know, rely on kind of working with the chairs of the committees and commissions and order that together.
All right, we could talk about more of this in the discussion section, so.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. So should we move on to the applicant's presentation? Great, so Larry? You're on.
I think John's starting, and then I'll.
John, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
He's running the show too, so.
I have to have some purpose here. Okay, thank you. My name is John Donahoe. I am uh with Stanford Real Estate, and I am heading up this project. Uh, also speaking tonight, as you can see on the screen, is Larry Strain of Principal with Larry Strain at Siegel and Strain Associates, sorry. Um, also in the audience are, we have a number of Stanford and our consultant team. This is the first kind of presentation that I've done in a Zoom format. I've always done them in the past, so I can look over at our consultants and point and ask them to answer a question if I don't know it. So uh, we we will uh work to get any kind of answer for you. It just may uh be a little more technically glitched, unlike uh meetings that normally happen in person. To get into our presentation, I first of all, thank you, Laura and Stephanie, who did a very good job of giving you an overview of a relatively complicated project. Um, I also ask all of the commission members, uh, any of the questions that you had asked Laura that you want to ask me when we're done with the presentation. Please feel free to do that. I will attempt to answer some of the questions as we go along, but I may not hit all of them. So feel free to come back and ask us questions that Laura responded to. Um, although I think Laura did an excellent job uh in answering your questions. Stanford came to this project uh or basically kind of into this project starting around twenty sixteen, and that was the point when uh Toll Valley Town Council started to have a community-wide engagement discussion on housing issues. Uh, and the town came up with a multiple point strategy of different ways that they would be looking at as trying to provide more housing within the community. Uh, that led in part to your ADU ordinance. Uh, it had led to committees looking at the potential for developing housing on on town-owned property. And it also involved uh talking to properties uh that are designated as affiliate housing sites within the town. Uh, housing element of the general plan. And as Laura pointed out in her presentation, Stanford uh has owned this property since the late eighteen hundreds. I believe it's eighteen fifty-seven. Uh, it was part of the land that Leland originally uh put together and donated to the university. Uh, we have not had an interest really in developing residential, although the property has been designated as residential since, I believe, since the town was incorporated. It certainly has been in the town town's housing element since the early nineties as a potential affiliated development site. Quite frankly, the Stanford's needs are for providing new housing for faculty so that we can attract new faculty to the university. It is, you know, we are not immune from the issues of how rising uh home prices in the Bay Area. Uh, when we go to attract and want to bring on a new Stanford faculty member, and they're looking and comparing Stanford with other communities or other universities across the United States, they all like Stanford until they start to look at the housing prices, and then suddenly we have an issue. So this is a project that uh in line with other uh initiatives that Stanford has been undertaking for at least the last fifteen years. We've purchased, we've developed new faculty housing on the main campus. We've uh recently are starting to occupy a housing project in Palo Alto on Stanford property. And we have a uh rental project for faculty under construction right now in Menlo Park. So this this is not unique. But when we started discussing this before the town council, what we wanted to do was get how we could develop the property with a light touch, not necessarily get in and do a standard development where we would be providing large homes on large lots, because quite frankly, that's not Stanford's needs. We are not a market developer. Uh, we're not intending to profit off this particular project. Our goal is to provide housing for our faculty. Mutually, it became apparent that the town was interested and asked us to put some proposals together, uh, which we worked on in twenty eighteen, and as Laura said, we made our application in twenty nineteen. So this is um, this is never a quick project or process. Um, and then as we are sitting today, our next big step in addition to these, this community outreach is uh having the draft EIR released, which will provide all of us with impartial information on potential impacts of the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Larry. Uh, Larry's going to kind of go over the thought process, uh, what led to our development, and then I will take back the mic and talk more about fire safety and what we're incorporating into our project, and then additional detail on trails.
Okay. So I'm going to talk, I feel a little silly because the project was so well presented that I'm going to repeat a lot of things you've already heard. But this this shows the property, seventy-five acres with the little ten acre area in the corner where we're proposing the develop to happen between Westridge and Minoka, Golden Oaks. It's along Alpine Road. Next slide. And you can see that that the the site just from this topo map gets very steep in lots of areas, and this is really the flattest area of the site. It's also the area that's had the uh, the um horse boarding facility, and the area does pretty much correspond with the area that was being used by the horse boarding facility, which I know was asked. There's, we have a, in our drawings, we have a drawing that shows that overlays where the horse, the horse facilities, but it's pretty lightly developed. There was just a few buildings and some corrals and fences and stuff. And actually, no water on the site for the horse boarding. They brought in water, so. So that's the the next slide, we'll go there. We started out, the first, the first site plan we developed, after a number of studies, we developed this about two years ago. And this one had twenty-nine single-family homes for Stanford faculty and included twelve units of below-market rate rental housing in three buildings. You can see them off to the side with the brown roofs on them. Uh, the development was laid out along a new loop road. The idea being that um we wanted an easy way to get in and out of this property, um, both for residents and for fire safety. And the goals really, besides providing the housing that Stanford needed and the town wanted, was to minimize the grading as much as possible and minimize tree removal. We spent a lot of time on site with an arborist looking at trees and as much as possible tried to work the houses around what we considered to be the really significant trees on site. Next slide. The plan we submitted uh in twenty nineteen was modified to address comments that we received both from the community, the town, and the Woodside Fire Protection District. There were two homes that were closest to the neighbor uh to the north on the right that we removed. So the lot count went from twenty-nine homes down to twenty-seven. We developed the housing with um single-car garages and driveways to minimize paving and avoid having big wide driveways and double garage doors facing the street, which did not seem at all like Petola Valley. We have twenty guest parking spaces on on along the street and eighteen bike spaces that currently are in the plan. Um, the below-market rate housing was moved to the center of the site to, one of the comments we got when we presented this the first time was that they seemed kind of off in the corner. We wanted them right in the middle of the site and sort of part of the, part of the site. Also, right next to the common open space that's being developed in sort of the knuckle of the loop road. There was also a fire access lane that was added between, this was at the request of the Woodside Fire Protection District to have access to this defensible fire break that runs behind the housing on the uphill side. Um, and we also show in this, in this plan that uh the stormwater detention at the low point of the site, so all the water drains down to it, with certain stormwater detention area and ponds were added in this area that would be able to handle uh so that nothing flows off the site into the creep before going through those detention ponds. Next, next slide. You can see this blow up of the common area, which includes a play space and picnic tables, low seat walls using simple natural materials. The same landscape architects that designed the landscaping and the playground at the town center designed this as well. And they're actually the landscape architect for the entire project, and they're very familiar with sort of native landscaping and and do projects in Petola Valley. So they were, they were our preferred choice on this. Next slide. Lots um are compact, as as mentioned, they range from a little under three thousand square feet to about eight thousand square feet. Um, this, this plan shows both the single-family detached and attached. Uh, retaining walls are only in where needed. They're not across the whole site, and that's really just to create a small, flat backyard for the, for the units, and they're typically three feet or less. Couple places they get a little bigger. The uh landscape is low water and native. Stanford will maintain the defensible space uh behind the building, behind the units, so that it goes up hills. There's two hundred, a two hundred-foot defensible area that's uh maintained to reduce risk of fire traveling through it. Um, that's maintained by Stanford with reduced fuel volume, and we also will be reviewed um by the Woodside Fire Protection District. The front yards are going to be maintained by the homeowners association, so not individually. Though, so there's some consistency in the planting and make make sure they're maintained well. And the only thing the homeowners will maintain is their own private yard inside the fencing. Anything else here? I think that's it. Next slide. Typical floor plans, these are two and three, uh, two-story, three- and four-bedroom homes. They're laid out with a a large, open, living, dining family space on the ground floor with an attached garage that opens directly to the living area. The homes are all electric with roof-mounted photovoltaics and will be designed to be net-zero energy and net-zero emissions. They're just, they're fairly simple homes. Uh, these, these amounts given here seem lower than the numbers you've been quoted, you've been hearing tonight for the sizes, and that's because they don't include the garages. When you include include the garages, they get to be about twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred square feet. Next slide. Elevations, uh, Stephanie already talked about these, but there, we kept them very simple. Muted colors selected to complement the native landscape. Materials were selected for durability and fire resistance with cement fiber siding, metal roofs, enclosed eaves, heavy timber posts at porches. Um, wood accent panels where where we have them, because we really wanted to get some wood into the project, are all backed by jip sheeting for increased fire resistance. So we're really making these to be, to meet Willie standards, and and we hope to actually hopefully go beyond those and make them as as fire safe as possible. I think that's my last slide, John. It's back to you.
Okay, back to me. So, uh, as I said before, I wanted to talk a little further about uh fire safety with regard to this project. We, we have known since we've initiated this project that this was uh an issue of great concern with the community, and as such, we've tried to put as much resources into this element of the project as possible. Uh, the pictures you see on the slide on the screen right now, this is actually the work that we did this past September in twenty twenty. Uh, it was uh work that we have been doing that has been informed actually by the vegetation management plan that we've submitted for review and approval, uh, as well as the computer modeling that I'll talk about in a second. But it allowed us to be much more efficient and more focused at the same time doing more clearing um than we've done in past years. For example, we found out, although we did run goats on the property uh for many years, quite frankly, that you can't tell goat what to eat or what not to eat. So in the case of the more heavily or the more woody materials, uh, the goats weren't touching them, and it, we literally had to land hand crews to go in and remove that type of vegetation. Working off of Larry's comments, we have designed fire-harden homes uh using fire-resistant building materials and fire-resistant landscape materials as well. Uh, down to the point where the top lot won't have mulch. You know, we have to come up with the fire-safe surface for the play area uh because it doesn't do you any good to concentrate working on, you know, fire-safe homes if you put flammable mulch around your homes or any of the structures out there. Um, key things that Larry didn't touch on, uh, we are going to be undergrounding the PG&E power line that runs across the entire length of our property along Alpine, not just the project frontage, but our entire proper, property frontage. Uh, as Larry said, all electric homes will not bring in natural gas at all, so that's another feature. Larry talked about the two hundred-foot wildfire uh buffer that would be maintained by our home homeowners association, and that would be in concert with the other work that I'll be describing on the remaining sixty, sixteen, four acres. Obviously, this project will require the extension of water lines to the site to serve the homes. But in addition to extending the water lines, we would be installing new fire hydrants along Alpine Road. And then as we do the connection, uh, we would extending the water line from the Westridge intersection. We would also be working to interconnect the water lines. There are two separate water lines in Westridge. There are different pressure zones. We would actually be doing an interconnect between those pressure zones, which provides um more of a redundant source of water for the Westridge community. And then, as Larry mentioned, uh, we've been working with the Woodside Fire Protection District to review this project, and they had requested essentially an access lane to the center of the property so that in case of an incident in and around the site, they can always come around both sides, but they can also come through the middle of the property. One of the challenges we've had on the seventy, the the entire property, the entire seventy-five acres, is the simple fact that uh the property is surrounded on three sides by existing single-family homes. We don't have any legal access to cross those properties to get into maintaining this property. Um, and as Stephanie and Larry had also previously pointed out, um, most of the site right along Alpine Road is is goes from steep to extremely steep. And that's a challenge in doing fuel management, especially when you're trying to get to the more remote areas of the site. The pictures I just showed you earlier of the work we did this past September, uh, we literally had to send out notices to all the property owners along this front and to request that we can get permission to cross their property to go in and do some maintenance work and pull the materials off the property. Uh, as part of that, we are going to be, uh, we are proposing the construction of a fire maintenance road uh to this point in the property. It allows us, as we do our vegetation management plan, to pull materials off the property to br- to bring in uh equipment so that we can pull off that equipment and then get it off the property. It doesn't do anybody a lot of good if you cut down materials or you start to harvest or do the thinning if you don't actually remove it from the property. Um, and then also what I wanted to show in this exhibit was kind of a blow up of showing the extent of the uh two hundred-foot wildfire buffer area around the project between the homes and uh the urban, or the, excuse me, the the wildfire danger areas up in this point. Um, and then again, this, the length of the extent of the undergrounding of the PG&E power line along Alpine Road. So how do you develop the vegetation management plan? Well, um, the first thing you do is you conduct wildfire modeling. This was something that, and Laura touched on this, but uh the draft EIR is also, has also retained a wildfire consultant that will be looking at this area and reviewing our plan, so we will be getting comments as part of the EIR on this as well. But on the left is, uh, what you see is the result of the existing additions. But on the left is what you see is the result of the existing additions from our wildfire modeling. And waterfront, wildfire modeling essentially looks at a variety of issues. Not only does it look at the vegetation types, but it looks at the density of the vegetation, because different, different vegetation reacts to fire in different manners. The density is affected, the direction of the type of slopes, if they're facing the sun, if it's a north facing slope, it has different properties in south facing slope. And then it takes into consider weather patterns. And they perform the modeling, they put it into the computer model and then you see this, the output that you see on the left. The darker the green, the safer, the more red that you see is the potential hazard areas. So we use this information to develop what's called a vegetation management plan, which I'll get into detail in just a second. But that's essentially your guide, your, the guide to making the entire property safer. It tells you how to remove the vegetation, what types it provides, standards. And when we execute the vegetation management plan, you see that all of the hazard areas are significantly reduced. So as I mentioned, the vegetation management plan, it's essentially the guidebook that tells you how to remove the material, how to implement standards. From our perspective, it's also a, a mechanism that we can provide to contractors. To ensure that they are doing the work that we want them to do. It becomes the specifications when we bring in contractors on an annual basis. It also includes the recommendation to provide that fire maintenance road that I touched on a minute ago. In addition to just telling you how to deal with the materials that you want to thin or remove. It also provides guidance on how to protect significant trees in the property. Guidelines to protect sensitive habitats. Guidelines, for example, for what to do during a nesting bird season, or we flag wood rat nests. And other features on the site for avoidance. And then also, it also includes methods for us to protect known and as yet undiscovered archaeological resources that might be on the property. This is a heavily wooded site of 75 acres. It's been walked several times by archaeologists, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they've seen everything. So there are policies that tell, exact, tell the contractors exactly what to do if something is found on the property. So I can answer obviously more questions regarding the, the fire safety during the question answers. I wanted to get into the trails issue. I have some slides on that and I know it's, it's an issue of discussion. So on the left you see, this is the actual trails and paths element from the town's general plan. Our site is up here in yellow and then what I've done is taken basically the same map and blown it up for reference purposes. And that you see that there is proposed trails coming across here, here, and then along Alpine Road. And then this canyon, which is technically off our property. So with our application. We have been looking at this and we have proposed the following looped trail. So essentially what you see here in solid white is the existing trail that's along Alpine Road. And then we pick up the trail, a loop system here, because it doesn't do any good to really have a trail that dead end. So you really want to have a way that people can experience the property, but have a way out. Most hikers don't necessarily like a dead end trail and so having a loop system is, is the, the best way to go. And what, again, we've tried to duplicate and be as consistent as possible, what you see in the general plan map. But the general plan map does say that that is kind of a conceptual representation. And that the details need to be worked out as Laura had described in her presentation. But one thing that I think is, is extremely important from our perspective. Is not only looking at it, what the general plan says, but also looking at the property itself. On the left is a habitat map from a biotic report, and this is going to be included and reviewed as part of the EIR. So not only do you look at a trail route that says, is it doable from a topographic standpoint? Is it walkable or is it, is, are the elevation suitable? But we're also taking into consideration. Potential streams and wetland corridors that run here on the site and run back down through here in the site. So we, quite frankly, we do not want to be disturbing repairing, repairing corridors. We don't want to be disturbing potential streams. And those factors help guide our decision and how we made our trails proposal. My hope is as we go back into all of the committee review. That they will have that draft EIR available for them so that they can look at this information and better understand. The habitat on the property as they make recommendations. I'm aware that they have made some suggestions and potential recommendations to date, at least from the trail committee's perspective. They also, they have not had this kind of information made available to them yet. The IR is controlled by the town. The town is overseeing it and they will be the ones releasing it to the committees. So with that, I want to just highlight just what we believe are the benefits of the proper, of the project. And then I'll be available for additional questions, but you know, certainly housing. That the need both within Portola Valley and the Bay Area is what brought this, this collaborative effort between the town and Stanford together. We want to provide community workforce housing in our affordable units. We're providing twice the number of affordable units that would be required. Because of the use of the state bonus density laws, Stanford would fully fund, build and operate the affordable homes, the affordable units. And then we would be providing additional faculty housing to help us retain top tier educators and researchers in the Bay Area. I think there was a question, I think Laura did a good job of answering it with regard to the revenues. These, these units would be fully assessed and taxed and those, those funds would flow to the town, the school districts and the Woodside Fire Protection District. We have set out to not only preserve the oak woodland area, but also set about making it. Safer with regard to reducing the fire risk and we are extending the trail network. And as I pointed out. With the work that we're proposing, we believe the Portola Terrace property will make the overall site that much safer than it is today. And significantly, probably one of the bigger significant elements is the undergrounding of the PG&E power line along Alpine Road. And then the vegetation management plan, which sets in place an annual maintenance program. To ensure that, that the overall site is as fire safe as possible. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We have Larry and as I said. Somewhere out in the, in the inner sphere is our other consultants, which I believe we can call on if we need them, but I'll attempt to answer as many questions.
Great. Thank you, John. Thank you, Larry. So John, what I would say is if you have a question that you think is better answered by one of your consultants in the audience. Why don't you call out their name and we'll make sure we get them unmuted and in the conversation.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So with that, commissioners, do you have questions for the presenters?
Yes. You can go first though, if you want.
No, you, you go. I'm, I'm looking over mine to see what they've already addressed.
Okay. So my first question related to the, to the numbers, the 39. Was that chosen because that's sort of the maximum you would be allowed to do? If you had the option to go higher, would you have gone higher?
I, I think you're, you hit upon a very interesting question. That was actually when we did our initial. Presentation for the town council back in 2016 or early 2017. That was actually one of the comments was, is that all? I mean, and you know, all numbers are relative, correct? But when we set out to, to basically do the math and follow the rules. It came out to be the numbers that, that Laura had presented earlier. We could get a maximum of 41 units, you know, following the rules. And then our requirement would be to provide six affordable and we essentially doubled those, the affordable units.
So you, would you have gone higher if you could have gone higher?
Well, going higher in, well. Yeah, I, I, it's a, it's an interesting question. I, it, because I never thought of it as having a choice, I guess, is what I'm saying is. We followed the process and the process led us to that number and we designed the project around that number. When you undertake a significant project, yeah, you would like to maximize your resources. But we were also very sympathetic to. The community, you know, the ongoing community interest in any kind of development in Portola Valley. I have an exhibit, actually I can, if I stop sharing and share another screen, I can answer your other question in a second. So you had asked earlier, well, what is, what is the proposed project look like overlaid with the, the horse operation? So I, I hope this is clear. I didn't necessarily develop this exhibit for this format, but I think you can kind of see enough what's going on. This is the gravel road and gate that kind of leads you into the project or into the horse operation. The facilities are kind of back in through here and then the gated stables are here and in the kind of the pasture area. So we essentially looked at this site and, and very early came to the conclusion that this was where the development should occur. It's the flattest. It's the closest to Alpine. And because of the history in the site. It has the fewest number of trees relatively speaking. So if we wanted to, well, and the other consideration is you can see it a little bit in this exhibit, but you saw in some of the others. The slope is actually running this way. If you see my cursor, it's going from the upper left to the, oh, lower right. So this is the relative, that's why we have a, basically a triangle shaped site is. We've stopped at a certain point to lessen great overall grading impacts on the project. You know, could, could we add more units or could we have done more disturbance to the site? Certainly, but the, at the cost of that is more tree removal and additional grading impacts on the site. So we felt after, after lots of alternatives that Larry and his firm produced, we felt this was the best overall approach. A project like this is always a series of, of trying to compromise of the different impacts versus benefits that you would achieve on a, on a development.
Yep. Lots, lots of trade offs.
I hope that, yeah.
It does help. It does help. So unrelated to that though, you know, there were some comments buried in, in, in the reports about possibly. I think they said moving it 25 foot, the whole thing, 25 foot south. Is that something you're looking at or, you know, have already said, no, that doesn't work. We've looked, we've understand and know that doesn't fit or is that, is, you know, are, do you have any opinions on that?
Yes, we, it has come up several times before. At this point, we've been very hesitant to do that. The reasonings are, are several. As you start to shift the property further to the left. You, you suddenly are doing a lot more grading in this area. In other words, if you imagine this whole thing moving to your left on the screen. Suddenly you're into more dense trees and the level of grading increases significantly in this area. So again, it's, it's again, the trade off. We felt that it was important to, to concentrate this area with the least amount of disturbance.
Another new topic. So one of the, the things that have come up there is, you know, we're going to get into, I'm sure we'll have a whole discussion on traffic later in this process. But I know there was a discussion of, or suggestions about, are you going to service it with margarite? And could Portola Valley residents take advantage of that? Is that something you've looked at or something that you're considering? I think I even heard somebody suggest that, oh, it'd be great if they did the whole loop Alpine to Portola Road and up Sand Hill again as part of a regular route.
Yeah, my, I have a phrase I like to use. I call that a beach boy solution. You know, wouldn't it be nice if we could do that? The problem is ridership, this is still a relatively small project in relationship to servicing, running bus lines out there. So the margarite certainly wouldn't be a huge margarite. But more importantly, Stanford already, you know, there are some interesting components about this site that make it very unique from a transportation standpoint. First off, the 29 homes will be occupied by Stanford entities. So we know exactly where they're, where they live and where they're going to work. That is not true in most other residential projects, because you just don't know where someone works when they buy a home or rent a, rent an apartment. In our case, Stanford already has a variety of traffic demand management. Items that we offer to our faculty and staff. So that if they want to work on, for example, access to a zip car. If they, if they want to ride their bike, they certainly have the C1 trail that was recently constructed on the other side of Alpine. That takes them by bike right into campus. If they want to do carpooling, Stanford has ways in which to reimburse, reimburse people who carpool. We have mechanisms that it, that in, in this, again, this size is not quite big enough for that maybe. But if they wanted to do a van, if someone wanted to have a van pool operation. So our goal with our traffic demand management items is to offer a large à la carte menu to each of these individual people. You know, faculty are a little different. They don't necessarily have nine to five jobs. So running a margarite or a detail, or dedicated. Bus kind, we may not have the ridership. We probably won't have the ridership. And I think we've been very clear with people in saying that, but that doesn't mean that we don't have other mechanisms. That we can use to help them, get them to campus so that everybody doesn't have to drive in and of themselves.
Okay. Earlier I asked to the staff, the question about ADUs. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I, I will go out on a limb and, and others within Stanford can always correct me, but that was never our intent. We're creating very small lots. So the lots that we are creating doesn't quite frankly, won't have room for additional ADUs. Laura has pointed out, we've worked very hard to basically try and look at this project and concentrate. You know, even back to your previous question, what would we do more? Well, we think we've done a lot within this footprint. And I just can't see how ADUs, you know, additional ADUs would work in this configuration.
I think my, my last question, and it's probably one that we won't answer tonight. Is the whole concessions and waivers and at some point I'd like to have a, what your thoughts were behind those, you know, what, what prompted it and, and. You know, that, that kind of process, unless you want to do it now. I'm sort of saying that I was interested, I'm certainly, I'm going to get a lot of questions about that.
Yeah, I, I think the earlier comments about having this as a dedicated topic, I think is great because we could. You know, quite frankly, any one of these topics, we could spend a considerably more amount of time on. And to do that one justice, I think it would be, would be warranted of a standalone presentation in that area. Because there are benefits, you know, we want to make sure that the community is aware of all the benefits that are getting, and you know, as I said in my presentation. If you look at the town's existing inclusionary zoning, all a developer is actually required to do is provide the town with a lot. You know, not to build or construct the affordable units. One of the, one of the biggest benefits to the community, in addition to getting the affordable units. Is the fact that Stanford will build them, occupy them, you know, basically using the criteria that the town develops. And then we manage them, you know, and that's a, that's a, that's a bigger issue from the town's perspective that we really haven't touched on. Like I said, other, other communities are either large enough that they have their own housing departments or groups. And/or they contract with. And/or they contract with. Nonprofits that do the work for the town. In this particular case, Stanford would build, occupy and then manage. And then what we typically would do would be providing an annual report to the town for consideration, telling you. Over the past 12 months, you know, who's, who's there not actually using names, you know, confidentiality, but to. Provide that the units are being rented at the affordable rates as established by the town.
Okay, that's it for my questions tonight.
Yeah, so just a quick follow up on the margarite. I understand. That you've got a, a general sense, it probably wouldn't have the ridership, but just to be clear, there's been no formal analysis of that. So far, right?
That's correct.
Okay. There is a statement by Stanford in the materials that surveying. The canyon trail, I think it is, or the property line is too expensive. To figure out where the canyon trail goes. Has that been costed out or is that a gut response, you know, based on experience?
It's certainly based on experience. What we have basically been saying and, and we have provided to the town and, and I, I don't know if. It's been presented to the trails committee and I will be doing that. Specifically next week, but we looked at this and it's not so much the cost issue. I think that we are willing to look at a variety of trail alignments. The problem that we see and the thing that we want to make sure is clear to. The committee, this commission and, and the town council is trails. In and of themselves are fine, but you also have to be aware of any unintended consequences of those trails. So for example, the canyon trail, which has been, been discussed a lot. In most cases, isn't even on our property. So the concern that we had is. You know, how, how do we implement a trail that isn't on our property? The second issue is, as I pointed out in my presentation, what are the environmental impacts of this? You know, things that I have been told in other meetings is, well, we've always run trails, you know, in, in creek beds. That's, you know, that we've always done it that way. Well, this is 2021 and environmental laws, both at the state and local, state and federal levels have changed dramatically over the years. So is it something that the community wants to take on? Because it's not as simple as just building the trail and assuming it's done. That's why in our other areas, we've tried to route the trails to avoid any potential impact, let alone impacts that we're aware of. And then the third issue is there is again, one of these trade offs that we've talked about before is. Providing public access into this land at this, at, at the risk of increasing fire risk. So I certainly have, yeah.
I understand. This was really, keep in mind, I think you're so far ahead of the members of the commission in terms of what's already. Been, been discussed and why. It was really just a very narrow question of whether the surveying. Help with the problem because to your point, if the canyon trail isn't even on your property, that's a different. A different topic, right? If it is, maybe it needs to be part of the discussion, maybe the analysis needs to incorporate it. I don't have a, a view. I'm just trying to get educated here on. What the sensitivity to looking at that was. So thank you. There were a couple of other things real quick. There is mention of discussions or different analyses about the right of way for Alpine Road. Needing to be 100 feet total. I couldn't tell if that got worked out or if that's still a part of the discussion about the, the. Width of the right of way that would be required. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, it's an easy answer. We've worked with Howard Young. You know, one of the advantages of being Stanford is we actually own the land on the other side of Alpine Road. So we have worked to create a route so that we can get 100 feet all the way through. In some cases, it may be on the project side of Alpine and on the other side, we may be using a little more of the other side. But from, from Howard's perspective or from the town's perspective, the general plan wants 100 foot right away for Alpine and. The plans that are before you do demonstrate how that would be achieved.
Okay, thank you. I'll have a closer look at that. Last one for now is. Obviously, there's a ton of work that's going to go on and both in terms of starting the story poll and then the whole construction. Without getting ahead of everything, there, there's currently horses occupying that area. What are the plans to move them or how are you? Or should we be thinking about managing that, that transition? Where are they going and, and what's their timeframe? Do we have a timeframe to keep in mind for that?
We've, yeah, we've actually talked about that a lot. I think right now there's only, I say only eight horses on the property. This has never been what I, you know, a full service stable. As I think Larry referenced, there isn't water on the property, there isn't power on the property. So what we would like to do is work with our tenant for, who operates that. And look at if we can help assist them in finding other locations. You know, the, the challenge is, is not only finding other locations, finding, finding something that's in. The same kind of price range or affordability of, of these, and that, that's quite frankly, the challenge. This is not. An area that is bereft of, of horse operations, but it may be on the affordable end. Yeah, we are, we're willing to try and assist in that area. Quite frankly, it's, it's a new one for me. Hasn't come up on a lot of my other projects, but we're certainly willing to, to use what resources we have to try and, try and assist in that. The timing aspect is. You know, we don't, we don't necessarily need to do anything until construction, you know, until we're ready to actually start construction. So we still have. You know, a significant amount of time.
Yeah, well, it's good. I, I know Stanford has other facilities if they can make efforts to, since that'll be good, but. Good to know there's no timing, critical near term timing. I'm going to turn it over to John. Uh, thank you very much for your patience. Or not John, sorry Craig.
We could give it to John for the rest of the evening. So, so great.
Johns are wild, yeah.
Yeah, 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 both, both Johns with an H and without. John, one question I had for you, um, do you guys have any kind of hard deadlines on this project? I know that we've got a lot of meetings in front of us and a lot of analysis to do. I'm obviously interested if this project does go forward, that we're able to sort of combine this with sort of Rena numbers that might come into the town. So I'm curious how you think about the sort of overall schedule.
Um, I think, I think as Laura pointed out, I think we have several months ahead. You know, the EIR would come out. There's a 45 day review period for that. I think that's the appropriate time. To start a lot more of the committee meetings, but is there a drop dead date on this from our perspective? Not really, you know, again, we're not a normal market rate developer who has an option on the property and has to have some sort of. Approval on a certain calendar data, otherwise we lose money, something like that. We have, we have done projects of this nature in the past. We fully recognize that it's important to go at the town's pace, not our pace. So the, the short answer is no, we don't have a drop dead date. We, we'd like to keep things moving. I think now is a good time. But Laura pointed out, I mean, Laura and I've had multiple conversations since. Probably late October of simply how to do site visits on the property and COVID has just kind of. Killed a lot of the things that we would have liked to have done today that we still know need to have. So we, we're not, you know, we just know we need to work through the town's process, but we also have to work through. The COVID issue, you know, Zoom meetings like this are fine, but people want to get out. And see the site and I, I want to be able to get out on the site and explain it to them. And I'm not quite sure that's a good thing to do. Until things get better.
I, I went to go check to see if the gate was open the other day, see if I could get in, but I decided I shouldn't be opening the gate on my own.
Well, great. Thank, thank you, John. I appreciate you guys going, being willing to work sort of at the pace that the town's going to move at. So with that, Laura, do you have anything else before we move to public comments?
No, it would be a good time to go to public comments. Um, so Carrie is going to help us to facilitate that. So.
Okay, so addressing the audience, thank you for hanging in there. It's. Almost 9:30. And we've got 64 attendance. So what I would ask is if you can raise your hands, I will try to call on you. As your hands show up, so it may be in alphabetical order, but I'm just going to take them from the top. I want to remind everybody that tonight's meeting is meant to focus a study session. It's meant to focus on broad issues. So you know, what I'm really hoping to see out of this is that you can help us figure out the right questions to be asking. So you know, helping the commission make sure that we get the right questions. And that we set up the right set of meetings to cover the areas that are really going to be critical for this going forward. So with that said, um, I, it's, it's late and we've got potentially a lot of people who may want to talk. So let's keep the comments on point. I'd like people to try to keep their comments to three minutes. And I'd like you to keep them focused on the broader concerns. With the commitment that we will have a series of additional meetings to go into. Details of stuff we've talked about tonight and things that we haven't talked about, but are clearly going to come out as part of the EIR. So with that, Dave Cardinal is at the top of my list with his hands raised. Can somebody unmute Dave?
Sure, can you, can we, okay?
We can, welcome Dave.
Oh, thanks. First, I think it's a great process. Thanks. Now is, we've lived on Golden Oak. Right above the wedge, if you will, for 30 years. So. You know, we have mixed feelings about like fire and this and that. So at a broad brush. I'd like to have us think about the pros and cons overall, instead of focusing on the minutia. And like for me, I see three obvious possible pros. One is. I'd love to see some more Stanford families in the area. Second, Stanford has been frankly, a terrible steward of the wedge property, either because they couldn't get to it or the goats ate the wrong thing or whatever. But they haven't done a great job of fuel mitigation, uh, which I think is probably part of why Don Bullard's letter back when was so. Abrupt. So I'd love to see them, you know, help us out, whether contributing to the fire district or. Really managing the property. I think we, this is the time to get them to do that. And third, to the point about margarite, I think maybe it's a little misunderstood. The goal wouldn't be for the 30 families who live there. I think we as a town basically have zero mass transit. And tons of people take short journeys into Stanford or Menlo Park. Areas that margarite serves and Stanford has a fleet of, I don't know, 100 shuttles. And I think could really help us out. So I'd love to see that more as a, you know, okay, overall, is this a good thing? And I, I think it will be. So that's my only comment.
Great, thank you. So Laura, can we make sure that, um, I think when we have a meeting to talk traffic. In addition to traffic, can we bring this up as a sort of a, a larger umbrella issue? Great, thank you. Okay, Nan, you're next up.
Unmute. Do I put on the camera also? Do I need camera?
Um, if you wouldn't mind, it makes it a little more personable. We like to see you, but it's not required.
Am I there for you?
Uh, I can hear you, but I can't see you.
In this format, the video doesn't work unfortunately. We just have audio.
Sorry Nan, so, so no video, but welcome.
Well, thank you Craig. Hi, um, really thank you for the opportunity to comment here. I'd like to address what may be a fundamental issue for the project. I'm Nan Shaw Stack. I'm a resident here and a geologist retired from teaching geology at San Jose State. I spent years researching local geology in the 1906 earthquake. And I wrote a master's thesis on the 1906 earthquake in San Jose. I think all the commissioners have by now received my recent short paper. On the difficulty or impossibility of safely evacuating Portola Valley after a large earthquake. I hope you will read it. The founders of our town had the wisdom to recognize the seismic hazard and risk of living. In this area and they have the foresight to make geologic hazard maps for the town. Right now, the particular concern is the Hermit Fault has been, has been mentioned. The Hermit Fault has a long, well documented history confirmed by all the geologists who have mapped this area since 1924. It was on our geologic hazard and ground movement potential maps until 2017, when it was unexpectedly removed. I can't find any report from either the planning commission or the council to explain why it was removed. I'd love, love it if someone could find that. The council adopted a policy approving other changes to these maps and those are documented, but there's no mention of the Hermit Fault. It simply disappeared from the maps. It's shown on all except the current Portola Valley maps as crossing through Stanford's proposed building site. As well as Alpine Road, it does cross through the houses. Uh, in my short paper, I note that if a large earthquake on the San Andreas triggers movement on the Hermit Fault, Alpine Road at the wedge will be impassable until. Extensive repairs have been made to the road. Further, there's a heightened risk of wildfire ignition and spread if, especially after an earthquake, if housing is allowed to be developed. On or near a potentially seismicly hazardous geologic fault as has been proposed. Okay, now part of the map fault lies directly under some of the houses on Stanford's site plan. Well, while you had the, uh, the site plan superimposed on, on Google Earth, I was figuring out exactly which houses that went through. I found two of them. Stanford's own geotechnical report, their own report. Found indisputable evidence of a fault in the middle of the proposed development site and they only filled five bore holes there. On red page 50 of your packet for tonight's meeting. You'll see that our town geologists from Cotton Shires say the fault should be. Located, they recommend that the fault be located by on the ground investigation. The geologic character should be determined and its potential for seismic risk. For the houses proposed for the site should be evaluated. Those are their words. This is critically important and needs to be done soon. Uh, we really must question the wisdom of building houses for families near and immediately above. This geologic fault that we've known about for a long time. His potential seismic activity is unknown because it hasn't been investigated thoroughly. We must not here get the cart before the horse. A thorough independent onsite investigation of the Hermit Fault on the wedge. Should be completed before development plans are considered further. Thank you very much. So that answers the question. Yes, this map Hermit Fault does go through the wedge. The developed, the proposed development on the wedge.
Thank you, Nan. Uh, and I'm sure we're going to have a, a digital, additional meeting to talk geology. So. Hopefully we can bring more information in at that time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, um, I think I have Don Bullard, I have Dee Bullard next. Still muted. There we go.
Can you hear me? Yes, it is. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just, um. I have a few comments to make that I hope will spur some further discussion in the future and it will. Help educate the residents on some information that we have from the Woodside Fire Department. Um, as Laura, uh, clearly pointed out in her thorough presentation earlier. This 75 acres on the Stanford property is situated adjacent to. Three large inaccessible box canyons below ridges of hundreds of houses, which would be. Inaccessible and nearly indefensible in a wildfire. This is of high concern to the Woodside Fire Department and poses a very high fire risk. To the residents of Portola Valley and our firefighters. The vegetation management plan. In concert with the. Ignition resistant building materials would indeed reduce the hazard, but in no way resolves the ultimate risk. The Wedge Canyon and surrounding canyons will always be problematic. They always have been for us. We've known about them for years. And they're very difficult to access and defend as are the houses on the ridges. And they're very difficult to access and defend, as are the houses on the ridges. Uh, second point, cluster housing in the Wui is risky business. It poses the highest risk for structure to structure ignition. And we have to learn our lessons from past mistakes. Putting cluster housing in the Wui is the reason why we will continue to lose more and more structures to wildfire in California. Cluster housing in the Wui equates to a severe fire risk. Less structures on the property would be a compromise well worth the benefit of a safer community. And I am open to and look forward to discussions to how we can make this project safer for the community. Uh, third point I would like to make in damage assessments for communities which have been subject to wildfire, structures with thirty to a hundred feet of defensible spaces and substantial distances from other structures have had a much better survival. The Stanford proposal promotes the opposite concept. Cluster housing does not allow for true wildfire resiliency or defensible space between houses. This is why the Blue Oaks development was planned with large separation from structures. And the planning department at that time put wildfire at the forefront of the Blue Oaks PUD. And then my final point that I'd like to make is that reduced setbacks, reduced lot size are not in the best interest of wildfire resiliency in any Wui area. If there was an ex- exterior or ignition of any one structure, there would likely be structure to structure ignition because of the close proximity. Woodside Fire Department could easily, all of our resources could easily become overwhelmed in this type of incident. And the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors disapproved a zoning production change in all high fire risk areas. Future land use and wildfire prone lands should use information from catastrophic losses in other communities as part of their roadmap. As you know, the CZU fire, they lost thirteen hundred structures and eighty-seven thousand acres. We don't have eighty-seven thousand acres in Portola Valley. I don't believe that. But I know we have about fifteen hundred structures, homes in Portola Valley that could be lost. So these are points that I want you to think about as we move forward with this project, and I'm open to having discussions about how we can make this development safer.
Great, great. Thank you, Don. Thank you for your input. That's definitely valuable. All right, next up I have Rita.
Thank you very much for your time. I would just like to, uh, I agree with, um, Commissioner Golden's, uh, concerns, initial concerns about affordable housing and wondering with all the concessions that we're making for this particular project, you know, um, wildfire safety, seismic safety, and a few others. There are just six affordable housing units, if I got that correct, six affordable housing units, but then we're losing all these other concessions. And then for these affordable housing units, you know, the, the other ones, the twenty-seven homes um, range from three bedroom to four bedroom up to about twenty-three hundred square feet. But the twelve, I'm not sure which ones of these twelve are the affordable ones. But, um, some are small, six of them is, are four hundred and seventy-five square feet. Three are six hundred square feet, and then three two-bedroom apartments are nine hundred and seventy-five square feet. And with the zoning ordinance of our town, the units are supposed to be of equal design and quality as the market rate units in the project. And how is a family going to be able to sustain and stay in our, in our wonderful town if, uh, you know, if their units are, are, are not compatible, it's, it's against our ordinance, but we are making concessions for this particular project, proposed project. And I also wanted to mention the indigenous people. Uh, the town mentioned it and Stanford touched on it. But the, this beautiful place, the erasure of the indigenous people in our town will continue if we don't take the time to acknowledge and preserve the knowledge we have. This area was such a magnificent local place for indigenous people, clusters of villages all along the ridges. They were not my words, but they're Stanford words because that information is all from Stanford, um, from the archaeology department. And you can also find a lot of this information in Nancy Lund's book about Portola Valley. In May, I inquired with the Native American Heritage Commission in Sacramento, uh, Sarah Fonseca and asked her about that particular location. She sent me a message back asking about if there was anything that was ever found on that particular property. And her letter back to me on June first was "A record search of the Native American Heritage Commission Sacred Lands file was completed for the information you have submitted for the above referenced project. The results were positive." And then she sent me a list of, um, leaders in the community, in the Native American community to contact for more information. And Stanford did do its first annual fire mitigation at the site on a, in Sept- early September, which happened to be on red flag days. I just want to point that out. And they did have heavier equipment than what was approved, um, from Don Bullard. And, you know, it, I just support the urgent need for prompt and effective mitigation of the wildfire hazards. But I'm also concerned with all the artifacts and the other habitation or burial of indigenous people on the property. And just want to make sure that that information is identified and found and preserved and have the Moekma and the Aloney people, um, come and review those sites before there's more large equipment coming through there. And those are the two things and, and I'll just follow it as the project goes on, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rita, and I'll work with Laura to make sure that we have someplace to include the, the native. All right, next up we have Helen. Hi Helen, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, this is, uh, such an interesting proposal to have a multi-unit proposal in Portola Valley, and I really appreciate the time and care that staff and uh, and the commission is taking with this proposal. Thank you. So I have lots of comments, um, and I'm going to kind of jump around. So thank you for bearing with me.
Helen, can I just ask that? What I'm hoping is you can keep the comments condensed so that we can get into the details when we have follow-up meetings.
Absolutely, and I recognize that there is a three-minute, uh, limitation, although the, as chair, I appreciate that you are help keeping everyone to that limitation.
It, as close as I can. I'm, I'm trying to be generous, but, but just as long as you're mindful, I'm sure we'll be fine. Thank you.
Um, first of all, preferences about, um, going forward for the below market rate housing. I really do hope that you, all of you ask for preferences for people that work in the town. That is allowed under the Fair Housing Act. Um, we are having problems with staffing teachers at the schools currently. Partly it's because of COVID, but you know, um, when you have an average house price of three million, teachers can't afford to live here. Um, the common open space, is that common open space open to the public? I appreciate the landscaping that they are creating. Um, but who is, I know, under the Quimby Act, it's often that you ask as a community benefit that that, uh, fifty percent of the, uh, open space is then accessible to the public as well. In terms of, um, the loop trail, I would hope, I am tired of seeing bicyclists hit in Portola Valley. I would hope that the trail would be wide enough for, uh, bikers and pedestrians to, uh, a multimodal trail. Um, I'm also curious, has Portola Valley coordinated with other nearby towns in San Mateo County, under Santa Clara County? Um, you know, Stanford is maxed out their density almost, or, uh, their allowable uh, permitted use. And I don't know what we're at with San Mateo County, but if we, um, which leads to the mitigations in Marguerite. Because our town is so low density, it's incredibly hard to create transit, which leads to my next comment. Um, and I think it was John Commissioner Golden, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. Um, you know, as long as we are doing a multi-unit development, there is a possibility potentially of creating more density with this type of development. It is not in the general plan, and I recognize that. And I'm not talking ten stories. I'm talking a few units that could go up to potentially three stories with additional units built on top of them. Um, that is still for financing reasons. Uh, you know, if you stay under five stories for the developer, it's still affordable. Um, so that's just an idea to get, because as we barrel towards our rein of numbers and having to meet those rein of numbers, I know my neighbors are worried about higher density and safety. So I appreciate that we are creating, uh, wild, you know, all the wildfire considerations. But because all of us live in town as it is, uh, I appreciate, you know, we're not doing managed retreat. None of us are moving. So if we are building here and higher density would allow more transit possibilities. Um, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Great. That was three minutes exactly. Thank you very much. Next up I have Gary.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Craig, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, I am the, uh, Chair of the Trails and Pass Committee here in town, and I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments. Uh, when we prepared our, um, comments, uh, in response to this application, we tried to look at them both through the, uh, the Trails and Pass element of the town's general plan and from the vantage point of the folks who would live on the wedge. Because I think, uh, they, they're the ones who would use these trails most often. So from the general plan, uh, Trails and Pass element perspective, we tried to accomplish several things. One is to uh, network our trail system together. As you know, the, the only way we get to grow our trail system is, is through the subdivision process. And so it's important, in fact, it's part of the Trails and Paths element that we uh, work to interconnect the various sub-trail systems of the town. And the current proposal, uh, fails to meet that. And that's why the, the, uh, the Canyon Trail is so important here because it is the main artery from the wedge up into the Westridge neighborhood. Now, the Canyon Trail has been, is not on any of the maps. Uh, John is correct that part of it is probably on private property, but there is a portion of it that has existed, we believe since the sixties, on the wedge property. And that has also vanished from the maps. And that's the primary reason we're asking, uh, in concert with the Conservation Committee to move the subdivision south to re-establish that trail which, uh, connects the portions of the Canyon Trail that are on private property to Alpine Road. So that's a very important piece of this in order to interconnect the, the various neighborhoods and to accomplish the goals of the, of the Trails and Pass element, uh, long-term vision. Now, uh, another, uh, part of our Trails and Path element, and it was just raised, uh, in a previous comment, is multi-use. Um, the proposal does not provide for bicycles. It does not provide for, uh, a, 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 a person pushing a baby carriage. So we, we want to see the trail system opened up to more types of users. And that is the basis for us asking to move the existing Alpine Trail inwards into the property away from Alpine Road. So it's, it's moved away from the traffic and the noise of Alpine Road, and it would give us an opportunity to widen it. And we, we would keep it a dirt trail, but we would widen it, and that would allow for bicycles to use that trail. So we think that's another, you know, key, uh, piece of, 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 of our proposal is to include something for everybody. Another, uh, proposed, another consideration in our proposal was, um,
Hey Gary, hey Gary, you got about fifteen seconds or so. Um, I'm assuming that we're going to have a planning commission meeting to talk about trails and that you guys in the Trails Committee, um, are going to sit down with John Donahue and have more conversations. So I don't think you have to give us your entire proposal right now, but you have a few things that you want to highlight?
Yeah, so I would say the, the multi-use consideration, the variety of different trail choices consideration, and the, the ability to, um, inter-network whatever trails do, uh, come about as a result of this subdivision, being able to interconnect those trails with the rest of the trail system in Portola Valley.
Okay, great. So I'm sure we're going to have further, major further discussion on this topic.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Rusty Day, you're up next. Hi Rusty, welcome.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you very much. And, and thank you, uh, for letting us know that there are going to be multiple additional hearings because uh, I think that's part of the concern that many residents have is whether the concerns are going to get aired, and it's gratifying to see, uh, the commission respond so positively uh, to this and to open up, uh, for further comments. So thank you very much. I, I want to just applaud that.
Good, yeah, you're welcome. And yes, I, I guarantee we'll have more meetings for sure.
Okay, I've got, I have, I have, I have two comments and I've got two brief questions. Uh, my first comment has to do with affordable housing, and I want to be clear. I want Portola Valley to facilitate and encourage the development of affordable housing, especially for low-income families. It's critically important. But I'm afraid Stanford's economic analysis shows that the concessions it's seeking are not economically justified and are a bad deal for the town. Stanford says the total cost of this project before concessions is fifty million dollars. But with concessions, it says it can drive the cost down to thirty-seven million. It's seeking thirteen million dollars in concessions from the town. Stanford also says the cost of constructing affordable housing units will be three point five million. Why should we give Stanford thirteen million dollars in concessions to build three point five million dollars in affordable housing? If we allocate the thirteen million in concessions based on the relative amount of faculty housing and affordable housing that Stanford proposes to build, over eighty-three percent or ten point eight million dollars of the concessions is attributable to the faculty housing. Why should we give Stanford over ten point eight million dollars in economic concessions to build faculty housing in Portola Valley? Housing that only Stanford faculty can own and occupy. Now, I heard Mr. Donahoe say that one of the benefits would be that Stanford would manage the affordable housing, own it and manage it. That means it's not going to be taxable. That means all the revenue on it's not going to be taxable. And it means they won't be paying property tax on it because they will own it. And as to the houses, they won't be paying property tax on the land. The residents will be paying property tax on the house. The second point I want to make is, uh, to expand a bit and briefly, very briefly, on what Don Bullard had to say. Many of the concessions Stanford seeks and asks the town to make will increase the project's fire hazard, not reduce them. I listened to Mr. Donahoe present Stanford's modeling of fire hazard, and I noticed in the bottom right-hand corner of the presentation, the output's all colored green, so it looks like it's good to go. And there's a little notation that says greater than ninety-nine percent reduction in hazard. Well, I hope, I very much hope you schedule a session on fire hazard. Because you'll learn that that modeling doesn't account for the contribution of structures to fire. That modeling treats every structure as unburnable and non-burnable and adding no net energy to a fire.
Hey Rusty?
Yep.
So the three minutes is up. I, I'll let you keep talking, just, so we're definitely going to have a session on fire.
I'm almost, I'm almost done.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. So I'm keep, let, just wrap it up and you're on. Go.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear you'll have a session on fire because you need to hear, the planning commission needs to hear, because it's such a critical part of your job. How our zoning ordinance is designed to protect us from fire and how the concessions that Stanford's asking you to make increase the hazard of fire by increasing the, the, uh, the, by reducing the size of lots, increasing the amount of housing that can be built on those small lots, by, uh, getting rid of the by getting rid of the easement for our roads, about not having pathways. There's a whole cat cacophony of things you need to hear and understand. The questions I have, would you ask the staff in Stanford to please post on the project website the presentations they made tonight? So we can have them. And would you please take public comments on the Planning Commission's priorities? You addressed those this earlier in the meeting, but you didn't take any public comments on them. And I think it would be good to hear what the public thinks the Planning Commission's priorities might be. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Rusty. Yeah, let me see what we can do to follow up on those. The meeting on the 27th is actually the Council's priorities for the town. But I'll, I'll work with Laura and see what we can do. All right, next up we have Mary. Mary?
Ryan, there I go.
There you go. Hi, Mary, welcome.
Hi, I'm Mary Huffty. I have one role that I, it hasn't been clear. I am on the board of the, the Woodside Trail Club. And I would ask, I'll ask about that later on when trails come up. But for the time being, my prepared comments are about the missing ingredient in the planning process to date, which I think has been curiosity and respect for the community and for our experts. I can feel that this meaning that that's resolving and I'm looking forward to seeing it better and better. But I would plead that all involved recognize with respect the fundamental requests that have been made already and unacknowledged. First, on Red Page 90, you will find that 300 residents signed a letter sent to Stanford's Planning and Entitlements Department and to the town planning on February 12, 2020, on the unacceptable risk for fire. This could have saved us a lot of time. The risk was first outlined by Denise Nia in September 1, 19, 2019, on Red Page 66. Surprisingly, there has been no response to the Fire Marshal's concern about the risk. Talking about the risks, not the hazard. The hazard to the project has been modified, but not the risk to the community as, as specified by Don Bullard and by, and by Rusty. We must have a risk-based fire study, not hazard-based, that helps us understand the fundamental threats present. Are you curious or do you respect our real concern for our safety? Second, we are a community committed to green connections for wildlife and for, for people. Our trails have become a major asset to the greater community. Again, it seemed to surprise both Stanford and the town that we are willing to fight for those connections. The Alpine Canyon Trail does not need to go through the canyon at, right on the stream as it does now. It's been grossly underfunded for years. It could run along Stanford and it could connect Westridge Shady Trail to the Alpine Corridor, Ford Field, Alpine Inn, and, and be, and Ladera. I'm, feel like you need to understand why we, why we think it's important and to respect our trails and wildlife corridor. So we, we need an equivalent of the Alpine Canyon Trail. Third, respect for the land and its contribution to the environment and to history. At the wedge, as you just heard, there are three specific seasonal streams running in winter to Los Trancos Creek that are recognized by the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board. When the Portola Valley Conservation Committee requests a 100-foot setback from the Alpine Canyon Creek, we are again surprised by the lack of curiosity and respect for what is there. Poignantly, history has collided with prehistory on the wedge site. Long-dead cowboys tell the tale of blast shafts that have, that were drilled through prehistoric artifacts on the Jasper Ridge Formation cliffs on the wedge. We respectfully request in-depth subsurface archeologic studies to assess the extent of the, of the artifacts and, and a disclosure of the history and residue of mining on the site. We, we request respect for our values and, and we, we hope for curiosity about the true strengths and value of this land. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mary. Kristi, you're up next.
Oh, thank you.
Hi Kristi, welcome.
Hey, thank you. It sure would be nice to see everybody on Zoom. Hello all, and I miss seeing my neighbors.
So do we all.
The feedback we're receiving from PV residents is that we respect, expect the Stanford Wedge application process to be inclusive of resident involvement. We want this process to succeed so PV residents' best interests are represented. We care about a successful, robust, open process in our town. And we, as residents, care about transparency and community engagement. We expect full disclosure of information and we ask committees, commissions, town councils to reach out to residents in every way possible to be inclusive and transparent. We care about sharing information even in draft form to keep residents informed when requests are made of the Planning Commission. One question I have for the Stanford applicant is can we have a 90-day period rather than a 45-day discussion period when it comes down to the last efforts to listen to residents in this town? Three examples where the progress has not been as open as we have hoped. We had over 100 Portola Valley residents write the Planning Commission requesting story polls of all the units be posted, not just a few, as other homes in Portola Valley are required, required to do. We have not received a response from the town. 110 residents signed a letter asking for an additional study session. And it's for the Planning Commission in ASCC. We did not receive a response. So I too am thrilled to hear Craig Taylor say there will be lots of meetings to discuss these things because I didn't know how many. It didn't, it didn't show how many and what the topics might be. But I've been reading other cities and anyway, I've noticed that they do multiple meetings. So thank you for that. And we've asked to review their traffic reports and we're told that the traffic reports are still being drafted. And yet, in the attachments, I see that Stanford received the traffic report, yet the residents haven't had a chance to examine it. So I think we need robust traffic and parking reports of Alpine Road and all its tributaries, preferably not during a pandemic when the traffic might be lower. I've asked for larger previous traffic studies such as Neely, Blue Oaks, Town Center and Ranch Projects. I'm thrilled to hear your planning to attend the Trails Meeting and encourage Bike and Traffic Committee as well. Alpine Road is our evacuation route. It's vital to our community to understand its limitations. The Fire Marshal needs to have time to go thoroughly through the traffic report and comment on it. And I share my concerns with the Arborist Tree Removal Plan that at the beginning, when it was rolled out, I was told there would be no removal of trees or prior to the permit being given to the applicant. Yet, months later, we see a permit issued to remove many trees and bring tractors onto the land. We're trying to do an EIR to protect the environment and yet we're letting some things happen that may not have protected the environment. We're deeply concerned about fire safety and families being able to successfully evacuate the fire. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Great.
Sorry, there will not be a fire, I hope.
Yes, yes, as do we all. Thank you. Barb, you're up next.
Hi there.
Hi Barb, you got a little bit of an echo, but other than that, welcome.
I'm turning down, my husband's on another computer. I just told him to turn it down.
Thank, thank you.
I'm Barb Eckstein. I'm also a member of the Trails and Path Committee. And I just wanted to reiterate that the current Trails proposal from Stanford does not address any of the suggestions that the Trail Committee has made over the last year and a half. Our goal is really trails for everyone in this town. So, and trails that extend the trail system for everyone. That includes the Canyon Trail or if that's not possible, a parallel trail running up Stanford property. So the Westridge neighborhood and, of extensive trails is connected with Alpine. We would sincerely appreciate a collaborative effort with Stanford instead of the silence that we've had in the last year and a half, which has been very frustrating for us. So we're here for the town of Portola Valley on the Trails Committee. And in our general plan, we are trying to bring more trails, which is what this town is really about. That's all I have to say.
Great. Barb, thank you. Yeah, trails are certainly an important part of Portola Valley. And John, I don't know if it makes sense, this is to John Donahue. I don't know if it makes sense for you to reach out to the Trails Committee prior to the draft EIR. I'll leave that to you. But obviously there's, you know, they're, they're feeling like they've tried to communicate with you and they're not hearing anything. So I'll leave it up to you to decide what the proper process is. But I think you've heard from several of the committee members.
Yeah, I can just respond quickly. I, quite frankly, we have not been and provided directly to attend. I know that our project is on their agenda. But that doesn't tell us when they actually are willing to discuss the project now. In other communities, staff generally would reach out to the applicant to make them aware of various committee meetings. So obviously, Portola Valley, every community is different. Portola Valley is different. So I had a conversation with Laura on this topic last week. And once we get through tonight, I will, I'll be prepared to reach out to the Trails Committee.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Sylvia, you're next.
Hello, and thank you very much for all your work and study on this.
Yeah.
As we all know, our town has high fire danger and also has very few routes out. So I have a question. Has, before we think about adding new residents, has there been any study done where, about whether all the residents of this town would be able to get out in time if there were either a fire, wildfire, or an earthquake?
I, I think that's a good question. I think when we are discussing the fire dangers, that's some, definitely something that we should discuss. I mean, certainly, the County of San Mateo has worked out evacuation routes. This is the new zone haven stuff. But I would expect that we would get Woodside Fire Protection District to weigh in on that as well.
I think it would be very wise before adding new families to the community to find out whether the existing families could actually get out safely in case of a disaster like a fire or earthquake. Otherwise, it's not doing the new residents any great service if they're trapped. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, I see that Barb's hand is raised again. Barb, is this a short comment or is your hand just raised and it didn't get taken down? It just got taken down. Okay, I think that's all of the public comment. Is there anybody else? Up, there we go. All right, great. Yeah, now's the time. So GK, G Coes?
It's Jerry Coes.
Jerry, sorry Jerry. Welcome Jerry.
It, it's been a long, but really a very good meeting, I think, for the first meeting here. And the Commission operates really well with three people. It's very efficient.
I think it's the new chair. What do you think?
I, probably that. I'm, I'm sort of a slow learner on some of these things and not really connected to a lot of them. But I, I looked at the, the ratio of the 39 units and, and 27 houses and 12 rentals and six affordable rentals. And it looks like it, it all appears to be a 15% approximately ratio given over to affordable housing. But when you look at the square footage, I don't think that's 15% holds up. So I was wondering why the distinction was made on units and not square footage. I'm a big believer in affordable housing, but I think the town needs a lot more than that tiny bit of square footage. Yes, it's six units, but the square footage is so tiny in proportion to the large houses, 27 of them, at whatever 22, 2300 square feet each. It's, it, the ratio is really off in my, you know, slow learning mode. And I'm hoping that that could be answered by somebody in terms of why it was a ratio of units, not a ratio of square footage. Thanks. Thanks for listening to the comment.
Great. Thanks, Gary. All right, next up is Robert.
Good evening. Thanks very much.
Hi Robert, welcome.
We, we've talked a lot about how the property's been cleaned and we certainly appreciate everything that Stanford has done on this. I know it's been a number of years before there's been a natural fire through there. But, you know, it's, it's hard for the community to, to understand what the risk is here. I'm wondering if there's any way, and I know that this is the time period of COVID, but you know, I can wear a mask and I can keep, you know, 50 feet away from somebody else. But it certainly would be nice if Stanford would have a time period where in a controlled fashion, the community could, could be, could, could be invited in to try to look at the property to understand what's been done. And I, I know that there may be a risk for somebody falling or something, but it would be nice to go back up into the upper parts of the wedge to, so that the community could understand what the magnitude of that risk is. That's all I have to say.
Great. Well, thank you for your comment. And you got, you got cut off there at the end, but I will work with Laura to see if we can organize some kind of public visitation day. One thing I would say is I think we're still a ways out in that process. I mean, there's, there are a lot of things that need to get sorted out before I think we're ready to do that. But I think having some kind of public visitation, if Stanford would be willing, would be a useful thing. All right, Judith, you're up next.
Thanks, Greg.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Chair of the Conservation Committee and we've put in several reports about this. And I was surprised to hear tonight for the first time, as I think was Gary from Trails, that somehow we should have been reaching out to Stanford to invite them to come speak with us. I had thought that our reports getting to them, I had thought that, that was the mechanism. At any rate, I would urge that when we reach out, that we do reach out through the town and that we jointly with Trails, because there's so much in common with us so that they're not having to have a whole series of meetings that are largely redundant and that we can have, if we had a joint meeting and the public could attend via Zoom, we could really focus on our issues that Trails and Conservation share and that that would be really beneficial to all of us to be more efficient with that. And the other thing is, one of the more important things that we have said over and over is that we think one of the most significant alterations that we would like to ask here is to move this whole thing south. And we heard from John tonight that there are reasons that they find that difficult. They'd have to do more, cutting down more trees, they'd have to move more land, et cetera. But the benefits of that, even if an additional 25 feet on the north in terms of habitat, in terms of trail, in terms of evacuation possibilities, in terms of connectivity with the trails that are already there, are really enormous. And in the, the area that you moved, there would be trees, trees you would leave. So they would balance out some of the additional trees you could take out if you had to do it. So I think the, the cost benefit for that, it, it obviously would be expensive for them to do that. But it's still pretty flat down there. It doesn't really start to rise up until you get past that 20, 25 feet area. And I really hope they'll look seriously at that. I think that solves a lot of problems for the town and would be an important concession for them to think seriously about, not just lightly about. Thank you very much. Appreciate.
Thank you. Yeah, so I will talk with Laura and with John. We'll see if maybe a joint committee meeting could be set up. All right, um, I don't see anybody else with their hand up. So Rita? So. So Rita, you commented once before, um, if this is short, I mean, hop back on. But um, it's get, getting late, so I don't want to have too many repeat customers. So.
Sorry, very short. All I'm asking is, you know, this was really beneficial tonight. And there were several people that were unable to attend. And I had sent a message hoping that this recording would be posted right away. And Jeremy said that it would be posted right away, so I hope it's posted on your site on the, you know, for the planning commission. And that uh, people that were not here tonight could see it by this weekend. So thank you ahead for agreeing to do that.
Great. I'll see what we can do. Sounds like a reasonable request. Okay, is there anybody else in the public that wants to comment before we wrap up this section?
Um, through the chair, I, I would recommend that you give the applicant an opportunity to just briefly um, provide any comments now that they've heard the public comments or if they have any response.
Sure, I would be happy to do that. John, do you have some comments you'd like to make?
I would, I would be happy to make comments. Just, I wa, I wanted to clean up a couple of things. Clearly, there are opinions expressed and, and we certainly value everyone's opinion. But there were some things that were stated that I want to do, correct the record. First of all, and I think Laura would agree, and if, if I didn't say it, I'm sure she would be about to say, we have not seen any traffic report from the town. That's quite clear. Larry, Laura has been incredibly uh, consistent in that we will not see the draft EIR until it is released to the community. So we have done initial traffic investigation probably at least two years ago. But we have not seen any of the work that the town has prepared as part of the EIR. Second, and I made this comment earlier, and I do, do want to reiterate it. I think it's critical that the various committees, the Trails, the Conservation Committee, have the draft EIR available as they look at and make recommendations on the project. As we talked about very early in the evening, any project of this nature is a trade-off. Oh, as we just talked about earlier, just we're referencing it, moving the site one direction has different impacts that may be related to other areas. So I certainly think, and the reason why you have an EIR, and I, I'm going back to my planning days in college, it is intended to be an informational document for the decision makers. It's not really to assist the applicant. It's not really to, you know, it certainly provides information to the community. But it really gives the decision makers impartial information on the topics that were studied. So I am very eager to see the draft EIR. And I really am eager to get back before the committees with that document so that we are all responding to the same information, be it on biotics or archaeology or any of the, or fire safety or any of these other particular issues. So that's pretty much what I wanted to address now for and I think the opportunity, I think the committee or the commission and the community for their comments tonight. So.
Great. Yeah, no, and I think that's reasonable. The one thing you might want to think about and maybe work with Laura, if it makes any sense, just to meet with the committees, not to make decisions, because I agree with you, until the draft EIR is ready, you're not ready to start actually making real trade-offs. But just making sure that the committees really feel heard, because what I heard tonight was they felt a little bit like they were sending messages into a black hole. And that sounds more like a communication thing rather than a disagreement to me.
Yeah, and I, I think it's important to point out that this project, I mean, I'll, I'll state the obvious. This is a very unusual project, and it does not necessarily fit the, the sequence and cadence of other projects as they have been reviewed by the town of Portola Valley. The fact that there is a tentative map, the fact that we have gone through um, four different submittals with the town, you know, responding to all of the, the, the communication that we've gotten from the town consultants. So there is a process. The EIR, I mean, I looked at my calendar. The scoping session for the EIR is now almost a year old. It was, it'll be a year old last year. Or excuse me, next week on the twenty-seventh will be the one-year anniversary of the scoping session that this commission had on the EIR. So there is a, from our perspective, there is, these projects do take a fair amount of time. So if various committees aren't used to projects of this nature, then I, I certainly understand the frustration because they're expecting things to happen quickly and right away. So.
Great. Well, we certainly appreciate you working with us and working with the town process. I think everybody realizes that this is a long process, that there's, you know, there's no, there's no shortcutting this. So thank you for your willingness to participate. Okay, um, so can I bring this back to the commission for discussion? Are there things that the individual members would like to discuss before we move on? Judith, would you like to go first?
Sure. Um, well, I guess just high-level comments. This is going to be a very special project. It has an important implication for the community. I believe it has important implications for Stanford. And, you know, to assure the public, we take that very seriously. And we do want a transparent process. The process isn't going to be as efficient as everyone would like. So please do comment, please ask questions for clarifying. And we will do our best to get, work with the town in terms of making sure information is known. There are so many questions that came to my mind reading through this packet. My goal is to get up to speed and informed through this many sessions that you outlined will, will take place. So just general comments. You know, we did read every letter and submission, even those that came in during the day today. And we will continue to do that. I will be looking at those and asking questions, in particular on the fire-related assessments. I will need to get educated on what these models are and, and how people think about these issues. I appreciated the fire district weighing in and highlighting certain concerns there. I think those are going to be critical discussions. And uh, you know, we have to just get through them and ask the right questions. In terms of um, you know, the, the understanding of the law and the calculations, I actually will want to understand the underlying calculations for the twenty-one lots, the slope density rules. That might not be what everybody else wants, but I do want to make sure that if we're talking about a certain density, we know how we got there at, at the level that um, you know, we're comfortable with. So I, I would like some substantiation of that. The trails in this town are critical to who we are and how we interact with the environment. So all of the questions and comments is Stanford observed is, you know, a process. And, and we don't expect everything to be clear. But I will be looking at the, all the issues raised there to get a great understanding of the reasons why they're making these proposals and, and, and the issues presented. So getting into the details on both, both sides of that would be important. And relatedly on that, the wildlife quarter, um, you know, what the issues are around having one there will be important. Overall, um, the, the more typical things, I think we could have all predicted here. I would still want to look at traffic, safety, parking ratio is making sense and not creating hazards on a very busy road. Light pollution is a, a constant issue for, for the town. Those are things we deal with and we have more of a map for, so to speak. You know, looking at things like the Hermit Fault and um, and how we think about the open space. And if there is affordable housing, how to make those, you know, how to lock those in in a way that we understand how it works that makes sense for the community. In terms of general categories, those are going to be mine. And um, you know, we're, we're going to have to just get through this as a, as a community and, and certainly committed to uh, getting much more educated than I came in today with. And appreciate everyone's time today because it's been very valuable. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, and your list uh, lines up pretty much with my list of, you know, additional meetings that we're going to have things to discuss.
Yeah.
John, what do you got?
So um, yeah, well, Judith chick, tech, checked off most of my list, but I did have a few ones that might be a little different. So, so one is back to this new housing goals. And, and I'm probably going to say something that, that comes across as a little controversial. So Laura, one quick question. The letters that went from the town council to the, the, the housing folks from Craig and, and John, I, I thought those are public information, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so um, sorry, I'll just elaborate for people why I brought that up. So if, if the housing numbers come through as expected and if they get allocated, you know, in the time, right timeframe, our quick estimate was that we'd have, we would, just to meet the state laws, we would need like ten Sanford wedge projects. And so, so my, my thinking there was, hmm, gosh, instead of it, everybody concerned that it's too big. You know, do we get to a point where it's like, oh, we'd actually like more? Um, and I think we need to keep that in mind because depending on how we move forward. So things like if we were to, if we were to get a conservation easement on that open space part of the property, that basically means you can't touch, you, you can't change your mind about your zoning. You're, you're basically locked in. And I know my initial thought was, oh, we, that's something we should do. And I'm just thinking of the long-term here going, I don't know, where are we on that? I, I actually believe when I look at this project, that one of the areas that I'm thinking, I'm, the way I'm sort of thinking about the problem is that we're going to end up at some future point with all available lots built in Portola Valley, pretty much as they're in the whole Bay Area. So I'm thinking of it more of, gosh, if, if it was twenty-one houses, the real comparison is, would that twenty-one individual houses be better or worse than Stanford's proposal? So, you know, I'm thinking along those lines of saying that may be the comparison that we're looking at here. So that's kind of a second point. With respect to, I guess, trails and fire, when we get to those, and I know we will, you know, one of the things that comes up, you know, is that we have a general plan and we have, you know, the trails element. And, and of course, one of the issues run into is the different parts of the plan can contradict each other, right? I mean, we have a housing element that sort of says, yeah, we'd like a uh, uh, warhousing. And on the other hand, it, you know, we have, we um, concerns about the rural nature and traffic and things like that. So you get some conflicts. With respect to trails, I know we have ideas on, you know, people would love to have something in there. I'd like to get into the discussion of what are those guidelines and recommendations or are those requirements? And how does that apply in this case to this development proposal? And I think that also starts to show up in some of the fire areas, which is, you know, this is land that was zoned for development, has been so for years. You know, if, if, if they had built twenty-one homes and a developer had come in, quite likely, we wouldn't even necessarily even see that from a planning commission perspective, if it was all built according to zoning. There's a, there's a certain amount of property right associated with owning the property, just like every other individual in in Portola Valley has. The fact that it's Stanford doesn't really change the fact that they have some property rights. And we might desire some things, but I guess I'm coming around to, okay, yes, let's have a discussion about what we desire, which might be accommodable. But if it's, if we don't get to this, where are we from a true legal perspective? You know, can, what can we require from a fire safety perspective versus, you know, if they've already met all of the codes? You know, I mean, we might like other things, but I don't know where we stand in terms of could we require that? So, and I guess I'm sort of thinking, gosh, I can see is that we're probably going to have people arguing that from both directions. And that uh, being able to discuss that and have that purposely brought out as part of these public meetings would be a good thing. Those are my thoughts.
Great. Thanks, John. Yeah, no, I, I think you're right on that we, we've got, we have some conflicting goals here. And as we move forward, um, you know, it's our job to gather input from the residents and, and help, you know, everybody in the town understand what those goals are and what those conflicts are, and then come up with the best plan that we can. So I think we've got good partners. Um, you know, I think we've got, you know, we're, we're still at, you know, what time is it now? It's ten-thirty and we still have fifty people online with us. We've got the Stanford people online with us. So, um, you know, I, I think we're trying to try to work, work through this set of problems. So is there, are there any other comments before I move on to the next item on the agenda? All right, then let me speak to the audience. We're going to continue on with Planning Commission business. You're more than welcome to stay on. It's much more mundane than the study session agenda item. So if you drop off, as I can see people are starting to do, we won't be offended. But if you'd like to stay and hear what else we talk about, you're, you're welcome to do so. All right, so with that, let's move on to agenda item number five, which is commission reports. So do we have any reports?
Excuse me, um, Chair Taylor.
Yes, go ahead. Excuse me, Kara. What's up?
No, um, you might want to give um, the public an opportunity to comment on the earlier agenda item that they weren't able to comment on before some of them leave. That was item two, I believe, related to the city council.
Three, three.
Um, yeah, I'm sure I'm happy. I mean, uh, I think was it Dave who had ma, had made that request? So yeah, um, or maybe it was Rusty. I don't know, Rusty just jumped on. So, um, sure. So let's have a hopefully short public comment on planning commission priorities and goals when we have a discussion with the council. Rusty, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, it was my suggestion.
Yeah, sorry.
And the suggestion that I, I would ask the council, and it relates to a number of comments or questions that were posed to the, to the commission. SB twelve forty-one, which is enacted in the government code, adopted in two thousand and twelve, requires municipalities with very high fire hazard severity zones like Portola Valley to adopt by two thousand and fifteen an amendment to the safety element of their general plan that sets forth a hazard and risk assessment for wildfire to the community. We have not done that. The governor's office uh, is directed to come out with a technical guidance to uh, instruct communities how to do that wildfire hazard and risk assessment. And uh, the governor's office of planning and research came out with that guidance in two thousand and fifteen. They updated the guidance in November two thousand and twenty. Uh, it's very extensive, very specific. It's designed to implement CAL FIRE's wildfire strategic plan from two thousand and eighteen. And it tells communities like Portola Valley exactly what we need to be doing in order to assess the wildfire hazard and risk, answer questions like, can everybody from town evacuate? And this was all required of us as of two thousand and fifteen. We haven't done it. So I would suggest that the Planning Commission prioritize getting that done.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll make sure that when we meet that, I'm sure it's going to be on because the wildfire committee is going to be there as well. But, but I will bring it up as, from the Planning Commission perspective as well. Thank you. Um, we got Mary.
I'll just be faster.
Hi, Mary. Welcome back.
Thank you. I, on the, I, what you could tell the town council, uh, I would have to say that what was mentioned earlier about seismic safety and what has happened to the geologic, uh, the seismic safety committee, which reported to the Planning Commission, and that it has not been convened in this, in the last three years. We have a, a strength in, in seismic, in geology in our town. And we should have an active seismic safety committee, a reporting queue, as it has in, throughout all of our plans. And to, to, to have that. And to, to, to have that disappear right now is most unfortunate. I think Nan mentioned it earlier.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other public comment on priorities for the town for this coming year, particularly coming from the, the planning commission? Rita?
Yeah, I would just like to have some more transparency. You know, we have that section on the website where it says projects. I, I'm glad to see that. And it looks like there's a second project now on it. But I'd like to see more. And then you, everyone referenced that January thirtieth, twenty twenty minutes. And they were in draft form and, you know, and I sent a couple of messages up until about, you know, just a few days ago. And even though I had asked about it, I would like to have some, you know, I, I guess a, a call and response when a question is asked of the public. Just more transparency and listening to the residents, working with the residents. You know, we live in this town. We love this town. We're, we're not trying to be, no, we don't want our neighbor to do this or don't want somebody else to do that. We love this town and we want to, you know, be here forever and enjoy it. So we appreciate everything that you do, but please listen to us when we have questions and answer us when we have questions. And update the website on the Stanford wedge, because then we'd have a whole lot less questions. I am sure there are more documents that have been received since before Thanksgiving, which it has been mentioned that there are documents, but they have not been updated. And I've been asking every couple of weeks. So thank you for listening.
You're welcome. Yeah, I mean, certainly our goal is to continue to improve on transparency. I know that that's council's goal. I know Jeremy's goal as well. So I think we, we can always improve on that score. All right. Anybody else with public comments? All right. So with that, I'm going to close, unless Kara has any other comments for me. Um, I'm going to close out this section and we've, yeah, Larry's gone. So, okay. So I think we're down to twenty-four attendees and the council and our planning and our attorney. So this is great. So let's go on to number five, which was commission reports. Do we have any commission reports? Okay, that was easy. Hearing none. Let's go on to number six. Do we have any staff reports?
Um, the only one that I wanted to share is, I had told you previously, we're going to be working on a list of active projects that we're going to come forward to ASCC and Planning Commission. So we are still working on that. We are populating the project's webpage more. And we will be working on kind of an update to reorganize the Stanford portion of the page to make things easier to find and you know, make it easier for residents to find that information. So we are actively working on those things. So I wanted you to know that that would be coming forward and you'd have that project list so that you would be able to anticipate things and ask his questions and, and know what's coming. So that's the only report I wanted to give tonight.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that's great. I think that'll help the residents in it for a sort of sense of transparency. And it'll certainly help us just having kind of a roadmap. It doesn't have to be exact dates, but just a roadmap of, you know, these things, here's how they're connected and, and here's sort of the linear order of this stuff, um, I think would be super helpful. So thank you. Okay, um. So finishing number six, I have a motion to adjourn.
You have a motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Do I have a second? You're, you're muted, John. Yeah.
Unmuted. Okay, I will second it.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, for the audience that's left, all seventeen of you, thank you very much for sticking with us to the end. Um, and to the commissioners, thank you for, you know, slogging through this. We got a lot of work in front of us on this project and others, but you know, I, I, as always, appreciate your efforts. Good night to everyone.
Night. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.